Before Tuesday, July 11th, we are returning to a public session. Begin with the flag salute. Okay, we do not have a regular translator at this time, so Michael Gonzalez will be translating for us this evening and he is going to come forward and make a, introduce himself.
Buenas tardes, aparte la mesa de tiva, gracias por estar aquí con nosotros esta noche. Si necesitan ayuda a traducir, por favor levanten la mano y les vamos a ayudar. Thank you.
Gracias señor. Okay, we also, I'd also like to inform the public that we have headsets available for anyone who needs assistive hearing technology and you can identify yourself if you do. Announcement from closed session, the board did approve the waiver for graduation students, the Casey waiver for graduation students with disabilities on a vote of four to zero with Dr. Noel absent. Mr. Price, do I need to read the, the case numbers or is it sufficient to simply say we approved that?
As listed on the agendas.
Okay, as listed on the agenda, thank you. Okay, acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Second, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero. And again, we like to thank those generous members of our community who give to support our schools and we definitely appreciate it. Now we have introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions and Dr. Sarvis will be making a couple of presentations.
Well, we have two tonight. You'll have to excuse the noise, we're beaming into another planet tonight. See what's going on there too. The first is that I'm very proud to introduce Mark Swanitz. Mark Swanitz is the new principal at Dos Pueblos High School. Mark, would you please come forward? This is our film side, right here. Just stand there, look charming. Let me tell you about Mark. Mark comes to us from the San Juan Unified School District in Fair Oaks, California, where he was vice principal. Mark brings experience in curriculum oversight, liaison with the University of California and California State University, experience with the Avid Program, in fact, his school was a demonstration site for the Avid Program, supervision and evaluation of certificated employees, and wouldn't you know it, student discipline. Got that one down. His responsibilities also included the GATE Program leadership, STAR testing coordinator, coordination and supervision of all counseling office service, oversight for the site technology program, the site technology, membership on the WASC accreditation leadership team, co-chair of the Committee for Administrators, Counselors, and Teachers that develop plans for the district-wide high school reform. So, Mark has an impressive background, he has roots also in this region. He graduated from Santa Inez Valley Union High School and then went to study electrical engineering at UC Santa Barbara and then on to education and English at Cal Poly with a later master's degree in educational administration at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Welcome, Mark Swanitz.
I'll just take a moment to say, I'm very honored to have been appointed to this position. It's a great privilege to return to the Santa Barbara County. Beautiful area and even more than that, a fantastic school that I get to take to home of and hopefully lead into the future and make even better. So, thank you for the appointment and the opportunity and I look forward to seeing more of all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Swanitz, and we welcome you back to the community and to our school district and we know that you will have a wonderful success at one of our flagship schools. Thank you.
I have to tell you, Mark just started yesterday and he hit the ground running. I won't tell you what all we got done yesterday, but it was quite a bit. Also with us tonight is United Way's President and CEO, Paul Didier, and the Community Campaign Director, Pauline Platus. Pauline, Paul, would you come forward? The United Way is a valued partner for Santa Barbara school districts. In 2006, 2007, their partnership with our districts will be in the areas of, now listen to this list, now these are direct services to our students in addition to all the indirect ways that our families are served by programs sponsored by the United Way. The Home Instruction for Parents and Preschool Youngsters, we call that HIPPI, but I like to call it the Home Instruction Program for Parents of Preschool Youngsters. You know, HIPPI just says something different to me. The Home Play Learning Kits, Pre-Kingarden Institutes, I call those kindergarten boot camp, Project Learn AOK, Fun in the Sun, Longitudinal Study of Fun in the Sun Kids from Santa Barbara, Curriculum and Reading Enhancements for Fun in the Sun Children, Character Counts, Healthy Assets with YMCA and CADA, Council for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, Jeopardy-like game devices to enhance individual and team learning. These devices are made by students for students and designed by United Way volunteers. And Teachers Online Resource Directly, I'll be telling you more about the 211 Directory a little later this year. This new directory is a tool for teachers to use to help their students be successful. It lines up 1,000 community resources that are available to teachers, so when they need help with a student, they know where to go. Paul and Pauline, we'd like to thank the United Way for all that your team does to support the children of this community and I have a small plaque to present to you. Thank you. And Paul brought some toys with him. Here, come and speak in the microphone here.
We spent some time interviewing teachers and principals and found out, a big news flash, if kids feel like they're playing games, they'll learn faster and better. And so, out of that came this idea that gee, wouldn't it be great if we could have some kind of electronic device that would mimic Jeopardy? Since it seems like every child, from whatever background they come from, has understood in the game of Jeopardy. So, basically, I wanted to show you a real-life example designed by some retired engineer volunteers, but constructed by your ROP students at Dos Pueblos High School. This past year, we have 10 of these devices, there's a teacher's control module and eight of these on 10-foot cords. So, we've been testing it at La Cumbre Junior High School with Joanne Canes and her math students out there, and the minute you press one, it lights up and it locks out the others and so everybody races to get the best answer first. And it was my first experience at seeing seventh-grade kids fighting for the opportunity to be first to answer math questions for 45 minutes. So, that was, we've got 10 of these coming, we're hopefully going to enter into a long-term relationship with Alsonki at DP and be producing at least 10 to 20 of these a year until we have multiple packages available at every school, because the one at La Cumbre has in excess of a five-month waiting list because everybody wants to play with it. So, I just want you to see what the finished product looks like and also ROP students learning how to do very critical and fine soldering and technological skills, reading the schematics, learning how to put the transistors and capacitors together. So, there's a whole lot of different kinds of learning going on. And I was looking at your mission statement and thinking about how we've worked with teachers and the kids and trying to achieve all of that. The one, we're going to leave you a little flyer example, is your HR departments and usually the counselors in the different schools all know what this book is. And this book is a directory we've been helping to provide to the community for over 20 years. It's all the different agencies and programs listed this way. And again, after meeting with teachers and principals, what we heard was the single most effective tool they could get to help them really help a child in need at the moment they needed it was, was what's available in the community. But everything they'd used before was always out of date the minute they got it, or it took too much time to thumb through it. So, what you're seeing there is a typical screen, they'll be able to go to the county education office, the school district's website, United Way's website, they can click right on it, a hot button takes them right to eight major categories of all the youth services that are available throughout the county. And from there, they go to an interactive electronics sort of spreadsheet and they can drill down right away and we've done some prototyping and we think teachers will be able to provide a lot of help in five minutes or less using this tool. And it's always kept up to date every day, so they don't have to worry about phone numbers, addresses. It's countywide, we'll be making this available to all the districts. Santa Barbara, of course, the largest, but we're going to be hopefully seeing a change in providing a tool that teachers have told us is something they're really looking forward to. So, I wanted you to see some of those projects that Dr. Sarvis enumerated, get to see them in real life and what it's going to look like.
In fact, Paul, I think we can use that Jeopardy device here in the board meetings.
Yes, we were saying we might need a copy of one of those.
It's our pleasure and I wanted to tell you in conversations, we're going through a strategic planning process, so mission statements really speak to me quite a bit right now and I'm looking at yours and how much our different projects interact at all the levels of what you have. And in talking to a group of people, we're mostly known as providing funding for services to 501(c)(3) private nonprofits and I just wanted you to know that we now have these 11 partnerships with the school district and that's more than we've had with any private 501(c)(3). And it's not necessarily that we went out with that in mind, it's simply looking at the issues, looking at the needs and what are the pieces that work best together to partner, to produce the result. And that's what the school district provides us. So, it's really an exciting partnership. I'm glad that we can be a part of bringing a lot of services in a very easy to process and easy way to leverage the school district's resources. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to also thank you again on behalf of the district. Looking at the list that's up here on the screen for us, we can see how, just what a fine service that you are rendering to our district and the students in it. And I think we're, one of the things we're very fortunate in this community is to have so many public agencies and community groups that do give of their time and their energies and their resources to help our students. But United Way has certainly, I think, gone above and beyond the typical kinds of support that we have received from the district and many of these programs are just vital to what our students need in the classroom and in the schools, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Sarvis, would you like to continue with the superintendent's report?
Certainly I would. School has started, can you believe that? Today was the first day for Santa Barbara Community Academy and Cleveland Schools. Santa Barbara Community Academy enrolled 320 students and Cleveland had 366 students in class today. So, the new school year is already underway. The Board Brief. Generally, on the second and fourth Friday of each month, my office issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of articles and reports on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area out here in front or in the superintendent's office. I'd like to call the board's attention to three items on the June 30 Board Brief. The first was a memo from Dr. Davis Hayden, no, excuse me, from David Hetjunk, wrong one. Dave Hetjunk regarding the Franklin Elementary School Facilities Concerns. Will make sure that the staff understands the reduced scope of work and the ADA compliance work, including, yes, the need for lever door handles as part of ADA compliance, no laughing matter when you need it, at Franklin, Peabody, Cleveland, and Adams, not just Franklin School, as well as efforts to address Franklin's concerns that were expressed here at the board meeting and addressed in the memo. We will also install new carpet as originally planned at the school, but not until construction is finished on the school campus as we originally planned. Second, 14 groups have now been identified as being insurance compliant for independent PE. The agencies, community agencies that met the district's insurance requirements include instruction in tennis, ballet, jazz dance, swimming, sailing, surfing, and water polo. And finally, in keeping with the new board bylaw, 9221 regarding the recruitment of new board members, an informal meeting for community members interested in the possibility of running for the school board will be held on Wednesday, that's tomorrow, at 4:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room. This is not in any way mandatory, it's only for information. Under the new board policy, we have also placed newspaper ads in a number of newspapers on our website. The nomination period for candidate filing is July 17 through August 11. The extension period for non-incumbents is August 12 through August 16. Well, we have several staff trainings in August and I have a list for the board members so that you'll be sure to get to all of them. The management retreat will be on Wednesday, August 16. Board members, if you could come at least to the first part of that, if you're available, I'd certainly like to introduce you to our managers and have you take a look at what we're about that day. Breakthrough training will be on Thursday and Friday, the following days, August 17 and 18. We will start the year with our elementary staff the following Tuesday, August 22. We'll be working with Susana Dutro in appropriate instruction for English learners and we'll spend two days on that topic with our elementary teachers. Then, on Thursday, Tim Knald will meet with the secondary staff on Thursday, August 24. Now, although we've scheduled a meeting for board members with Tim Knald in the evening, in the, I think it's late afternoon, early evening, on Thursday, August 24. So, if you'd like to just attend that, I think you'll find that most instructive. But board members are welcome to attend, the details are available on the handout and I'll be announcing that again in the future. Let's see. I believe that is it for the superintendent's report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, and I'd also like to thank you for the chart of the meetings because that's very, very helpful to keep track of the times and dates of all of those. I also wanted to just comment on, in the Board Brief, I was happy to note how many of the dance groups had been able to meet the insurance requirement because that had been raised as a concern for many of the dance groups, so I was pleased to see that. Okay, we can move on to correspondence. Do any board members have any correspondence they'd like to share? No? Okay, then we will move ahead to item C9, Public Comment. And this is the point at which the members of the public may speak on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda, but is within the jurisdiction matter of the board. I believe we do have some?
Well, I'm not sure, I may have to ask Craig for help here. We have a bunch of people who would like to speak on Hidden Valley, something about the Hidden Valley project and I, we have something on our agenda under F2. No, sorry, it's, yes, F2. Whether to redirect them to that point or whether to, even though they've indicated they wanted to speak now.
I would suggest, as in the past, that you redirect folks to speak to the item when the item is scheduled to be heard, with the possible exception of anybody that's here that isn't going to be able to stay in attendance during the time that the item is considered.
Okay, just so that everybody is clear, item F2 is the request to address the board by the Hidden Valley Residents Association Board of Directors regarding the UNIDev study. So, those members of the public who would like to speak to the Hidden Valley issues identified in the UNIDev study would be best advised to speak at the time that F2 is taken up. Is there anybody in here who has submitted a request to speak who will not be able to stay? Okay?
That's okay. That's all right.
Yes. Okay, so we will, we will take those items up at the time we reach that point on the agenda then. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda? No? Okay, it appears not, so we will move on to our consent agenda. I'm sorry.
I have some others, I have some others too that are here to speak on the Santa Barbara Community Academy and I believe that would be under F3, part of the facilities master plan update. And is there anyone of that group who wrote down C9 who would want to speak now, although it would probably be better to speak under F3? It's written on here as 9:30. The person who's speaking has 10 minutes. Comment.
Madam Chair, can I ask that we make that item time certain and move other items around it? Is that possible? So that we can say it will be at 9:20, which is I think what it's agendized for and we can get to it at 9:20?
It's agendized for 9:30. I'm sorry, F2 is agendized for 9:20.
And F3 is?
And F3 is agendized for 9:30.
I'm sorry to make this more complicated, the problem is, is F2 has been agendized for 10 minutes and there are a stack of speaker slips, so F3 won't come up until probably, I don't, you know, 9:45, 10 o'clock.
I agree. No, I mean, I agree that that's a likelihood. Hang on one second. I'm sorry, we are concerned because if we move the item to earlier, then anybody who was planning to come at 9:30 to speak to this item may miss the opportunity to do so.
I would suggest we just take the speakers who cannot, who do not plan to stay until 9:20, 9:30.
The item is agendized for 9:30, F3, it is likely we will, it will be a little later than that by the time we get to it, so those of you who don't believe you will be able to stay, we can offer you the opportunity to speak now if you would like. Okay?
Are you Judy Ricker?
I'm Judy Ricker. I'm speaking as a parent of the Santa Barbara Community Academy. My son, I have two children, and my son was a kindergartner the first year of the academy. That makes this my eighth year, we started today, we started our eighth year as an academy parent. I remember years ago, sitting in these board meetings and listening to the OAS parents and supporters talk about being in their 25th year without a facility and I remember feeling very smug about the fact that we certainly wouldn't be there. But now it's year eight and the academy still doesn't have its school. As you know, I'm sure everybody knows, we're split, half and half. Half of us are downtown in our original school and the other half are at La Cumbre Junior High. I was among the parents who were really unhappy about the idea that the school would be split and that we'd be sending our elementary kids to La Cumbra, but I have to tell you, after having been there this year, it has been a fabulous experience. We could not have envisioned how good it would be, nor could we have been any happier. I think I speak really for our whole group, it has just been wonderful. And the fact that Joanne Canes, we'll miss Joan a great deal, but the fact that Joanne Canes is going to also be the principal of our upper school will make, will make everything go even more smoothly and that's very satisfactory. But the reality is that you can't run a school in two different sites and have it function as a school. What we have is two separate schools and everybody works hard at trying to coordinate the two halves, but it doesn't really work. We have a lower school which operates in one way and an upper school that operates in another. And I think that it's really important, the academy has been a tremendously successful school and I think there's, I think the board is committed to continuing that success. In order to do that, it needs to get back together and it needs to get back together in a place where it can stay and grow and flourish. We'd like to be downtown, but we probably realistically can't be, so if it's La Cumbra, have it be La Cumbra. If it's somewhere else, that's okay too, but the school, the academy needs a school so that it can get itself back together and go on with the work that it, that it needs to do. And one last plug is, you've got an opportunity to be thinking seriously about the academy. I, as a parent, I would really like to have you think about the possibility of making it K8 and allowing the core knowledge to run its logical course through the, through all the eighth grades. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ricker.
Just a quick comment, tonight's presentation will be the starting point for the district's discussion of such issues and the lack of a permanent facility for the whole school, Santa Barbara Community Academy, is chief among those needs on that list. So, we will solicit a lot more input through this fall as we have those discussions and move toward a decision.
Julie Woodward, did you want to, do you want to speak now or at 9:30? Okay.
Thank you, Judy's a tough act to follow, but I've been an academy parent for seven years and my little girl started second grade today, so we have at least four more to go, so. And, again, the La Cumbra Junior High, though not our best, not my, the desire of my heart, really has turned out to be a really great temporary solution. The split campus is, I feel like I'm juggling burning cats every morning trying to get kids to school and, and we don't live close to here, we drive for 20 minutes on the freeway to get to this school. And frankly, I do it because my children are thriving at the academy. If it was all about me, I would have cut my losses and run six years ago, but they're thriving here socially and academically. I couldn't create something better if I got to pick myself. My kids are, my kids are doing great and I'm very grateful to the school. I'm grateful to each of you because you've hung in there with us through our unique history and I appreciate that. I would also like to see a K through 8, to continue the core knowledge throughout junior high, which is what core knowledge was designed originally to be. I know that that's not a perfect plan, that that comes with a whole new set of problems, but- but welcome to the world of academy parents. So that, that is my desire, is to have a K through 8 ultimately at the La Cumbre Junior High facility. And, and I really do hope that this year we will see a, to see, to see some solutions. I know this has been talked about for many, many years, and I would really like to see some action taken, and I appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
And last, Marie Henderson, did you want to, you'll wait.
Yes, Ms. Hummer? Did you have a? Wrong pile, Alyssa.
My name's Alyssa Hummer, and like Judy, I too am an eighth-year academy parent. My son just started third grade today, and I want to just back up everything Judy and Julie both said. We have been a split campus in one way or the other for at least three, if not four years now. We've had our kindergarten off someplace else, and we really need to pull the academy family back together. I think it makes a huge difference for the kids to have the advantage to have all the grade levels together on the same campus and learn and grow together. The staff needs to be together. It's very, very, very difficult, so I really urge you to please do something to put this school back together. And I too would support a K through 8 school. I think why it wouldn't be ideal, we would love to be downtown. I think the reality is that this campus is not going to work for the full school. So if you do move us to all of the campus, to La Cumbre, that's great. I hope it is a K through 8 academy. I have fears about moving the academy there and then having it just be subsumed as one school with, with La Cumbre. So either, either to make, my urge would be either to make the whole La Cumbre site a K through 8 academy, which I think would be a great idea to run a real boon to the, to the community, or at a minimum, have the separate academy school on that campus. And if you need to keep La Cumbre Junior High separate from that, that will be your decision. But please don't let the academy get subsumed or made secondary to another kind of elementary year, elementary junior high setup at, at the La Cumbre campus. And then finally, I know there's been some discussions about standardizing the schedule for all the schools, and I understand all the financial reasons for it, but I think one of the really successful things about the academy has been the year-round schedule. The kids are on a great pattern there. You know, my son is, is head back to school today. His big sister now is on the, on the standard schedule, doesn't go back for another six or eight weeks. He's ready to go, and he's ready to learn. In fact, my daughter is saying, you know, I kind of be ready to go back to school now. And, and I think that continuum, that constant continuum has just been so great for them. And I would really hate to have the academy, and I guess Cleveland as well, lose that ability, lose that scheduling. I think it's a critical component. I hope you can consider that when you're thinking about the schedule. I know you guys have headaches about schedules and food service and all that stuff, but if you can make it happen to keep those year-round campuses going, I think, or put the whole district year-round, that's an even better idea. But, okay. So that's my two bits for the schedule, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer. Okay, I believe that concludes the speakers for, for this item. So we will move on then to the consent agenda. I'm sorry, did we have one more?
Peter Platt, did you want to speak now or later?
My name's Peter Platt. I have a five-year-old, or a fifth grader at Santa Barbara Community Academy. He's been there since kindergarten, and he has thrived, as Judy said. And I want to thank the board for their continued support of this school. It's been hard for us. It's also been hard for you, and we seem to battle at times, but we're all faced with the excellent test scores and the results that the academy has shown, even though the environment has been far from ideal or even desirable at times. I understand that we can't have a downtown school here for a lot of reasons, and I think that's unfortunate, but it's a reality. And the trouble that we've had because of the growth of the academy, in part due to its success and desirability to the community parents, has created issues that we, are behind us, I hope. And at this time, in looking at the, the possibilities, the, the thing that's most important to me as a parent is to get a unified campus. Santa Barbara Community Academy has a mission statement, and the community in its name is not just a word. It is a community. The parents sign an agreement. We agree to volunteer. We are a family of families, if you will, you know? And, and that's important, and that's been lost now. It got lost when kindergarteners were over at the junior high school in trailers, and it's really lost now with fourth, fifth, and sixth not being with the K through threes. And that needs to be remedied, whether that's at La Cumbre or somewhere else. That is somewhat irrelevant to me since I drive to get my son to wherever he's going to be, wherever he's been. However, it needs to happen, and it needs to happen soon. The K through 8 at La Cumbre Junior High would be wonderful, since he's in fifth grade now, you know, in two years. I would love to see him still in a school that required parent participation, volunteerism, and a sense of community that we, he's had for the first six years of his education. And I just hope you can do what's in your power to do and do it right. I know you will. And the parents and, and other organizations around the academy are, are willing to help if you need to sell parents in, near around La Cumbre Junior High. But all you have to do is show the test scores, you know? And the adjusted test score is a perfect 10, the only one in, in Santa Barbara School District to get a perfect 10, you know? And, and that should sell it. So it should be an easy sell, and I just hope that we can get there. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Platt. Okay, I think that is it now on public comment. So we will once again go to consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members wish to pull?
All right, go ahead.
I don't feel like it needs to be pulled. It's a clarification on D2. It lists Ms. Keynes' travel expenses, $12,000 something dollars, and everyone else is $2,000. So I'm guessing it's a typo. $12,000 she could go on a trip around the world.
I really hope she's not planned that.
Yeah.
No, that's a typo, I'm sorry.
That's all these people.
It, you know, and it actually could be, it could be the total.
It's a total for everyone to travel.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Okay, then.
Oh, excuse me. Item D4, I just had pointed out to me, does not have a contract. That will need to be pulled.
Okay.
And the new student system will have to be brought back to the next board agenda for contract approval.
I had a couple.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez?
Very, very quickly, on D6 and D7, I just caught a strange typo I thought we might, we might want to fix on the resolution. Department of, of Education was spelled FO. Not a big deal, but I probably think we want to correct that.
I'm sorry, on the actual item itself or on the agenda?
No, on the item itself.
That, that was D6?
Resolutions, D6 and D7 both have the same typo. A minor thing, I just didn't have time to call in.
Thank you. We will make that correction.
Then I will make a motion to approve with those corrections. I'd just like to put in here that under retirements, we have two instructional assistants from Washington School, Patricia Watson, who's been with us for 17 years, and Irene Hernland for 15 years. And I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus item D4. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Obstentions? Okay, motion carries for zero. Okay, and item D4 will come back to it as, to us at a future meeting.
The next meeting.
The next meeting. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the action agenda. Item E1, public hearing and approval of the fiscal year 2006, 2007 final budget.
We heard a report on the budget at our last meeting. I believe you'll agree with me that these budget documents are superior compared to, to what we had before. And that thanks goes directly to Mary Stark, to Bob Wolf, Shirley Corpus, to Patty Pimentel, and to Alma Flores.
Yes, and would like to thank all of you because this document was, was very readable and very informative. Thank you.
Well, I can't take any credit for it, other than I had the good sense to be the hiring authority for Bob Wolf and Shirley Corpus. And Alma Flores and Patty Pimentel are in the department, and I'm extremely proud of all four of them for the hard work they put into this. I wanted to, and I know that these tend to get a little busy, but I think it's important that I, that I go back over them again. And where's the little laser thing? Oh, this. All right. These budgets that were brought to your, brought to you as drafts on July 20th, or June 20th, brought again on June 27th, that are now in front of the board this evening, have some updates that were put in place for several reasons. One is equalization funding was added to the budgets. We did not have it in the original budgets, but the Governor Schwarzenegger did sign on June 30th, couldn't believe it, the '06-'07 California State Budget. And that has equalization in it. Now, there is an item where Bob Wolf put a memo in your backup for the combined budget that says that there's AB 1802, which is a trailer bill with appropriation specifics for education, that is going to speak to some of the other programs that are going to be funded for education. But we went ahead and put equalization in primarily because it looks solid that it'll be funded. Of course, anything can happen. But because the board had given a direction that the elementary district needed to meet the 3% reserve, and that's where the funding source was from. And that's what I speak to in my memo, where I say the second item is the minimum reserve for elementary district is met. And other post-employment benefit liability with the equalization money was then able to be picked up in the multi-year projections for '07, '08, and '08, '09. You recall that's based on actuarial study. And I did update the elementary building funds. So I'm going to give you a recap, and I'm, and I'm not going into a lot of detail, there are only four slides, because then Bob is going to do a presentation for you on the combined format, and we'll close with what's next. All right, for the elementary district, final presentation as of today, this is very similar to what we had brought to the board at the closing of the June 27th meeting. However, equalization funds have now been added into the revenues. When we did that, we have a new estimated imbalance of $1,003,000. Recalling that, of the $1,003,000, $4,000 is held back for revolving fund cash, $57,000 is the stores reserve, 3% economic uncertainty reserve, which is based on the entire expenditures in the general fund, both unrestricted and restricted, is $1,002,000. This is what's left for future board action '06-'07. Yeah. I don't think we can go to lunch on that, even, all of us. But we met, this is a 3% with equalization added. Could you just flip to the next slide, please, for the high school district? You recall, by the way, that $7,000 was a negative figure when I brought it to you on the 27th before the equalization. High school updated?
To the tune of, I believe, 233.
Yes, sir. 233. Very good. Very nice, Superintendent.
233.
233? My. So now it's a plus 7,000. The high school general fund, again, equalization funds now added into the revenues, and the ending balance, ending balance estimated in unrestricted funds is $3,783,000. $5,000 revolving fund has to be held out, 133 for stores. We have to hold out 2.3 million for economic uncertainty reserve, minimum. And available is $1,003,000 in '06-'07 in the high school district, which was at 400 and some thousand dollars on June 27th. So equalization made quite a bit of difference in the high school district. I expanded it too far, didn't I? Can, oh, it's you? Okay, it's him. What I'm working to do here for you, and he's going to adjust it so we can read it better. Let's take that 7,000 left over, available for future board action, elementary, and $1,003,000 in the high school. We've been talking about this for many meetings. What's your direction on what you want to do next? And you gave me direction for the, for the budgets that you wanted a 3% reserve met. You wanted other post-employment benefits funded, and you wanted the after-schools program, Parks and Rec share picked up of 50, I think it's 57,000 plus in the high school district. And we've done that in these budgets. Now, we talked about building a reserve of an additional 2%. For the elementary, a 1% increase is 414,000 or 828,000. You've got 7,000 to start with. So when you have that 800 and some thousand dollars, if you build it to, by 2%, this is what a 1% increase in salary and benefits would run. This is if you wanted to pick up an additional amount above the 1% cap on health and welfare premiums. And the elementary did not fund the other post-employment benefits transfer in '06-'07. We were able to do it in '07, '08, '08, '09, and the multi-year projections, it's not in. So if you wanted to go there, that's how much you would need to do it for this year. So similarly, in the high school, the $1,003,000, that is now available. A 1% increase in reserve is 770,000. It's going to be over $1,004,000 if you want to go to a 2%. Little higher than what's available at this point. And this is what it costs for a 1% increase in salary and benefits across all units. $565,000, $36,000 to do a 1% in health and welfare premiums, if you chose to do something like that. And the post-employment benefits transfer is already in their budget before the $1,003,000. Oh, now I move to Bob. This is the, that's the last piece. Bob did the lion's share of developing these budget reports, the beautiful pictures on, on the front cover, the combined format that had to be crunched down through separate software. He did an amazing job.
Ms., Ms. Stark, can I just ask you very quickly a question on your previous slide?
Yes.
With the exception of the 1% increase in economic reserve, you had a, you don't need to put it back up there if you don't, if, okay. With the exception of that first item, the other items would not be something that we would do in the secondary districts without also doing them in the elementary district? Is that correct?
That's right. When you negotiate increases in salary and benefits, you do it for both districts at the same time.
Okay, so even though it looks feasible, some of that looks feasible in the secondary district, the elementary district would be struggling?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And which is why you've already given me direction at a previous board meeting that we need to bring back a list of, of suggested additions and reductions, and we were planning to do that for August the 8th. And I had recommended we didn't do it until the governor signed the budget. So August the 8th is the next board meeting. And definitely, we'll be looking hard at what can be done for the elementary district to even be in position to do any of these others, to, to build a healthy reserve, to provide for collectively bargained agreements, right?
Okay, thank you.
This, this particular slide looks at what the state has required us to do. And on last September, you all voted for a single resolution, district resolution. As you notice in the documents that were provided to you for the elementary and high school district, back in the Barry Back section in the technical review checklist, there's a bunch of negatives and says it doesn't match the fund balance. That's because the state didn't preload the beginning fund balances into the individual districts. They combined them and put them in the combined district. So what this slide looks at, is this slide looks at the combined districts, the information that was just provided to you. You can see that the bottom of the elementary school district has about $7,600 left available after the 3% reserve. High school's slightly better. You can see the revolving cash in the combined. The combined is what the, what the county office will receive, and it's the official report for the district. With the two districts together, obviously, each district meets its own 3% reserve. The high school's obviously in better shape. You said the right one? I'm trying to do the, there it is. This is a slide that looks at where the revenues are coming from. You can see that the majority lion's share of the districts, both districts combined and even individual districts, come from the revenue limit, which is basically based on attendance. There we go. This is a revenue looking, we're looking at the revenue in a little bit different light. This shows the restricted and unrestricted, and then the totals. So you can see in the revenue limit, in the revenue limit on this side, the majority of the lion's share is in unrestricted, in the unrestricted funds. Obviously, in the federal categorical, in the state categorical, you can see the difference in how the funding goes. This is where the elementary, this is where the revenues, or where you're spending your money. And just to satisfy Ms. Mitchell, the certificated indicates both management and teacher, classroom teachers, union members. Same thing with the classified percentages here, it's the combined. So all of the certificated individuals, both administrators and classroom teachers, are in these figures. There's not one group pulled out of the other. This, again, is the same type of look. You look and see where the unrestricted funding is paying for the majority of the certificated individuals, and then you can see as they go through where all of the other money's coming from. This is a comparison of the elementary school district comparing their revenue limit ADA, which is in the green, to their enrollment. The difference right here is the amount of money that's being lost because students aren't in class. And we've talked about that over the last year. I was asked to put a trend line in here with a big arrow on the backside, just in case you didn't understand, that the elementary school district was losing enrollment and losing attendance. Plummeting is the word I'm being, you see the puppet, the puppet's hand in my back, you know? This is a comparison of the high school district. It's not quite as bad on the downward slide, it's sort of just a little bit. But eventually, all of those kids in the elementary school district that aren't showing up are going to show up here. If you look at the TRAN report, if you have a copy of that, you'll see that Galita Valley is also in a declining enrollment. So eventually, all those declines are going to hit the high school district, and they're going to be in the same situation that the elementary school district is. Yeah, Galita Union, I'm sorry. And this slide is slightly different than the one that was in the budget, in that we've added the estimated, we've added the three years of the estimated of the multi-year production. And you do have copies of that on your desk, and there are copies in the back. Then this is just, this is a look at the, this is a look at the combined, both the elementary school district and the high school district combined. Same thing, looking at combined enrollment, combined attendance. And I believe that's it. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, yes?
I don't have any questions at this point, but just to thank you both for, it's always fun to look at bar graphs and pie charts, it makes things a little bit easier to understand. And the budget documents look great, and there's a lot of good background information there that I would hope the public would take the time to read through. There aren't that many pages of narrative, and I think it really helps to clarify what our financial circumstances are. I think many people probably are not aware of how our district, how our budgets are funded, and where the money goes. And I think it's important for all of us to better understand that. So, thank you.
Those are focuses on the general operating funds, because I had covered the building funds at the June 20th, and somewhat at the June 27th presentations. What's next? Approving the Board's budgets tonight. And then on the 18th of July, Budget Staff are going to attend the School Services of California workshops on what was in the Governor's budget. The Governor has until July 19th, actually, to act upon AB 1802, which is going to be speaking to appropriations of the various educational programs that were in that budget. So we get specifics. And then on August the 8th, the Board Agenda will include a suggested district's budget additions and reduction items. And I cannot stress enough how we have to look hard at the elementary district. That trend line, I did have him add that purposely, at dropping it 200 to 300 students a year, the revenue limit side of the district, which has very few areas to reduce, and you're now starting to look at facilities and staffing, is where we need to look hard. So did you have any more questions of us at this point, before you look at the recommendation to approve?
Board members? Okay. I think our, I think you've been very clear, and we've, as you pointed out, we've had several meetings where we've discussed this. So are Board members ready to make a motion?
I guess I better use the official language. And do you want this as two separate motions, or now that we're a single budget, is it one motion?
Why don't you just say including all three budgets?
All three budget formats. Move to approve the elementary and high school budgets in the combined report format.
Okay. I move to approve the single combined budget for the district, and the elementary budget, and the high school district budget.
Secondary. I'll second.
And combined, right?
Yes, I said that first. Combined elementary and secondary.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stark, and to your staff. We really appreciate the amount of work that has gone into creating these documents. Okay, that brings us to item E2, approval of .4 FTE teacher on assignment assistance for educational services programs.
And this is a bring-back from our last meeting. The Board had asked for more information on it. Mr. Zettel provided that in the write-up, and he's ready to talk about it.
Okay. Mr. Zettel?
Thank you. I think my opening comment is that with the additional requirements of NCLB and of our categorical programs, as we look to go even deeper to maintain compliance with our districts, we've had to look for additional help. It looks like we're going to be losing two consultants that we had hired for the last several years. They won't be with us. And so I'm asking that we approve a .4, really a two-day-a-week teacher-on-assignment position at the district office. The funding source is going to be part of the Title IV Safe and Drug-Free Schools and CBET categorical funds, the CBETs from the state. We're looking at having the .4 work with the administration of the California Healthy Kids Survey, which now has become a yearly event because of the grants that we're involved in, and projects that we're involved in. And it's a massive job at all of our schools, trying to coordinate all of that testing. Also, the administration of the Supplemental Education Services Program. We've grown from one tiny little, with no children in it, at year one, to a very large program now, and we're looking at adding additional children. And that requires a lot of work with contracts, with follow-up with service providers, et cetera. We're also pulling back from our contract with the GAVERTS folks, with the CBET oversight, thinking that we'd like to bring our own leaders forward with the opportunity to work on that. We know that we have people that can do that, and so some of the funding will come from that. We're also going into another year of a large core academic program adoption, and science is coming up for next year. That's going to require a lot of processes, a lot of work and coordination with the junior and senior high, as well as the training sessions now that we need to organize for the history social science. We're also, we have a lot of things on the plate. We're looking at moving, well, actually, in two weeks, we're going down to San Diego to the AVID, just a very large conference from all over the country, people coming to the AVID Centers, work in San Diego. And we're hoping to implement curriculum from AVID throughout the district, and to retune our REACH classes into AVID. That's going to require some professional development time, some discussion and dialogue time. You heard that we're also bringing forward the Professional Learning Community idea. It's something that we need to do. It's a research-based way to process information and data, and collaborate on raising the achievement levels of our kids, and we're going to need some help with pulling that off and putting that together. So this may be an impossible job. I've really stacked it here, but we really need the help. And this is what I was able to kind of cobble together, and we think we have someone that will really be able to do that for us. Questions?
Board members?
Yeah, my question is really for Dr. Sarvis, and not for Mr. Zettel. I suspect that probably in the elementary district, there are as many demands, but there's not the budget to allow it. I mean, is this something that we're able to do in secondary, but would be neglecting in elementary?
Well, for the most part-
I know it comes from categorical funding, but-
For the most part, you're right. Sorry, Robyn Swawski. Yes. However, we do have CBET money at the elementary level, and I believe we're still planning to use GAVERTS this next year at the elementary. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke then. You'd better address that then.
You know, actually, it's interesting. The secondary district has a little bit more funding in the unrestricted, the general fund. And at the elementary level, because of the student population we have, we have much more categorical funding. So we're looking at maybe a .4, .5 person. I'm meeting this week with someone who might come on and help with some of that. So we may be bringing a similar type of position to you with categorical funding.
Thank you. You know, there's something, there's a buzz in the sound system. It's driving me nuts. I don't know about anybody else. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it.
This is the other planet that we're plugged into.
Actually, Chris has gone through the system, and we haven't found the bug. And I worry about that when it gets televised.
Yes.
It's not too bad there. I can only imagine what the television station will tell us.
Yes. Well, we hope that it's going to be decipherable when people view it on television, but it is a little annoying tonight. We're just going to have to kind of try to get through it. It died down a little, and I'm sure it'll come back, but-
That's because you commented on it.
Yes.
They've gone away.
I had one question, just a clarification about why we are withdrawing our contract with GAVERTS.
Very quickly, we felt that we could do it more effectively ourselves.
Okay.
But also, if I might add, the key person from GAVERTS has retired this year, the person who oversaw the CBET program. So I suppose it's a perfect time to try and build our own leadership in that area.
That's very well said. That's exactly what we'd like to do, and feel like it's imperative that we begin building our own leadership from within. And this is a great opportunity to do that. We have the funds to do that, and we're glad to bring people to that leadership position.
Are we ready for a motion?
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
This person be located at the district offices?
We're on wrestling with that one right now.
There isn't room, is there?
There's not much room. We're talking about it.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 4-0. Item E3.
As I had indicated in the Board Brief, I was going to, I am bringing you a plan to reorganize three departments, the three departments being the Research and Evaluation Department, the Information Services Department, and the Computer Technology Department into one, the new department being Research, Evaluation, and Technology. Very specifically, I'd be asking for these changes. One is to change the title and duties, and I have job descriptions attached, for the Director of Research and Evaluation. Two, the Director of Research and Evaluation of Technology. Essentially, this elevates the position that we brought the Director of Research and Evaluation in on, to the same position that I held when I came into the district. The second is to increase the duties of the Coordinator of Technology. And I need to correct something here. I don't want to give the impression that the direct, any of these coordinators of technology have site-level responsibility in supervising technology, whether they're tech lab teachers or technology network support people at the sites. So let me restate that second bullet under the plan, which is to increase the duties of the Coordinator of Technology in supervising the district technology staff, and overseeing the assignment and work projects of the technology staff at each individual site. So we do need this person to carry the responsibility for telling people at sites what they can load on the systems, the software requirements, the procedures, and how to handle the hardware. So we do need that level of oversight, but this is not a direct supervisory role for this person. The third would be to reassign the current Administrative Secretary to a 30% position as a coordinator of testing, to oversee the state, federal, and district tests that are given on a regular basis. And fourth, to restructure the current web designer into a shared position with Information Services. In fact, that web designer already meets with the people in technology. If I may take another moment and draw your attention to the organizational changes on the chart on, it'd be the fourth page in, I believe. As you can see, we originally had four, had three separate departments. The new department would be a single department that could operate as one. And we're looking at a number of changes this year, the most important of which, I think, now Davis Hayden may have a different idea here, but I think, is the installation and training on a new student system. In order to get that accomplished, we need the Coordinator of Technology to take some responsibility for that. And if you'll look at the third bullet down, under supervise the additional technology staff at all schools in the district, let me clarify that as well. What I'm really looking for is for this person to oversee the assignments performed by additional technology staff at all the schools in the district, not to supervise people at the site level. And I suppose while we're at it, the line directly below that is really a dotted line, since it deals with site staff as well. Just as the line below the Coordinator of Testing is actually a dotted line, we don't have any supervisory capacity or supervision responsibility over site evaluation staff under that role. You see the, on the next page, the history of positions. So you see the before and after. The added expense for this year is $3,600. As I said in the write-up, I will bring back, at the end of this year, another proposal to restructure that position, which will yield the savings to the district probably of $7,000. To be honest, I'm trying to hang on to Ash Coots for one more year, so he can get all of this installed and help us with the training. He's a valuable resource to the district, and in order to do that, we need to put a new job description in place. We have not ever found a job description for Ash Coots and the job he performs. He has been serving under many titles in the district, all of them having to do with hardware, networking, district software, district systems. We do have a draft of the job description for Coordinator of Technology. Third to the last on that is, again, this statement about supervising and evaluating site-level people. I would amend this statement to read, supervise and evaluate district technology staff and provide support supervision and evaluation role to principals for technology staff working at the district schools. So he's really helping, and that's part of our philosophy, about having people at staffs who are directly supervised by the principal, at sites who are directly supervised by the principals. It doesn't work very well to have people at your school site that you don't have direct supervisory responsibility over. So you have the job description for the Director of Research, Evaluation, and Technology, which adds in the technology responsibilities. You have a job description for Coordinator of Technology. And finally, you have a job description for Coordinator of Testing. And I'm asking- And I'm asking your approval of this reorganization.
Madam Chair, financial question.
Yes.
Having to do, it's only a small impact to the general fund for this year of $3,600, but was it included in the assumptions for the '06-'07 budget? Because otherwise, 30% of $3,600 is going to be subtracted right off the bat from that $7,000 that's been, that's remaining in the elementary budget.
That's right. No, it was not included in the budget report you just saw. I couldn't include it without your approval. So I didn't want to get prior approval and guess that you might approve it.
No, I didn't know if it, yeah, I've got you. So it would be right off the bat, we'd be subtracting from that $7,000 plus change. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Question about the, so the new salary for the director position would go up to $106,190. So that's a starting point and then that becomes a new eight-step scale in the management?
No, it moves at the same point in the scale. I believe it's something like step four. It moves from that lower point to the higher point at step four. So it doesn't start all over again.
Okay, so this is the middle step then?
Yes.
Represents the middle step.
And I don't recall whether it's step four. I believe it is.
So that whole-
But it's at that same point, at that same year mark.
So you're just adjusting the salary upward?
To a higher range.
For that classification.
And that's it. Mm-hmm.
So we're talking about a $6,600 bottom line for elementary? Does that sound about right? I just want to connect the numbers.
Did you take 30% of $3,600 off that?
Yeah, I took a third is what I did. Yeah, okay.
I have one more question. You have a programmer position is vacant and will not be filled and that showing is a, that will not be filled at all.
We have a programmer position that's vacant and, well, let's see. That programmer position became database support. And we have filled that already.
I see, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any additional questions? Right. Are we ready for a motion then?
Chair, I'll move to approve. The idea of trying to implement a new student information system without making these changes just doesn't seem like it would be very feasible.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
All right, we now move on to student expulsion cases.
In the case of, did you want to read out the numbers first?
Yes, I'm sorry. Board action on student expulsion case numbers 0405-62, 040, I'm sorry, 0506-86, 0506-87, 0506-88, 0506-91, and 0506-94. Ms. Harder?
Yeah, I'm gonna be moving in a different order.
Okay.
In the case of 0506-94, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero.
I'll do the next one.
Go ahead.
In the case of 0506-86, move to suspend the expulsion and require the student and direct the student to attend community day school.
And not to return to their home school at the conclusion?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a date on?
A date on that?
January 2007.
January 2007.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries four zero.
In the case of 0506-88, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero.
In the case of 0506-87, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
It's what it is.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? I'm sorry. Nay, against? I'm sorry. Opposed? There we go. And abstentions, motion carries four zero.
In the case of 0506-91, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries four zero.
In the case of 05, excuse me, 0405-62, move to approve the request of the student to return to home high school for graduation purposes and senior activities only in the next June. I believe that would be next year. But I guess that doesn't matter. Approve them to go back to their home high school.
I'll second.
For graduation and senior activities only? Or for?
I'm not sure we need to specify that. Is it correct?
Mr. Gonzales, do we need to specify for the purpose or just, can we just say return to the home high school?
Okay. Okay, for the, so as I said it.
Well, you have.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the motion is to include for commencement and senior activities.
And I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero. Okay, that actually brings us up to our break a little bit ahead of time. Does the board, I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzales?
Please excuse me. Did that last motion include also the expulsion of the record?
Ah, it did not.
Thank you.
That was also, that was also part of the request. We didn't stipulate it, but I think you did say that we were agreeing to what the student had requested and that was included in the student request.
I did include that in my thoughts.
And that was my intention when I seconded.
Okay, so yes, the motion does include that. Thank you. Okay, what is the board's preference? Do we want to take a break now early or shall we move on to our conference agenda?
I would recommend that we take the break because neither of our next two item presenters are here. Ms. Arias is not here. I don't know Mr. Powell. I don't know if he's here and I don't see, and I don't see Mr. Williams.
Okay, we will take a 15-minute-
I'm sorry, Madam President, before you do break, since you do have the time and so as not to take it up when these other matters are being heard after the break, could I ask the board to go back to consent item D4?
Yes.
Which was the contract for the student information services system with the Aries Company. And in whispering in the last few minutes with Dr. Hayden, I know that he's very concerned that, about the consequences of losing a month. That would be until the next opportunity for you to approve it. Apparently, the contract was inadvertently left out of your board package. I have reviewed the contract. It's a standard form purchase, software license, and support type of agreement. And if the board wished to reconsider its earlier pulling of that item, you could at this time and to approve the contract premised upon the final contract being submitted to the president for approval in exactly the same form as the sample contract that I've just reviewed. I wish to bring that to your attention for whatever consideration you may want to give it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Is it the board's pleasure to consider that option?
I would assume, Mr. Price, that the contract is merely a reflection of all of the information that we've already received. It doesn't deviate in any way.
Yes, that's correct.
This would be a tremendous help to us to be able to move ahead.
And then we wouldn't need a special extra meeting.
No, but Annette Cordero would have to take a look at it.
That's fine. I don't know if you would like to restate that, Mr. Price, for purposes of one of us making a motion.
Yes, I would recommend that a motion be to revisit consent item D4 to approve the contract conditioned upon the final contract being submitted for signature to the board president in the identical format and with the same contents as the sample agreement, which has been reviewed by staff and legal counsel.
Thanks, Mr. Price. So moved.
Second. So I just want to double check. We don't need to take two actions to reconsider and then to act on it. Reconsidering and acting in one motion. Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and take our 15-minute break now. We will resume with our conference agenda. Turning of the school board back to order. We will be returning to our agenda, the conference agenda, and I believe that Mr. Powell is here. Yes, okay. But Mr. Williams is not present. Mr. Powell, would you, would you like to go ahead without him or would you like us to delay this item in the, in the hope that he will arrive?
He is coming, so I think it would be appropriate to wait if that's okay with us.
That is okay with us.
May we go to F4 then, in that case?
We will suggest that we move to item F4, which is the first reading of the 2006-2007 Santa Barbara School District's initial proposal to CSEA.
And we have Dr. Robertson who will present this.
Dr. Robertson is here and prepared to give us a presentation on this item and hopefully by the time we have concluded this, the rest of our presenters will be available. Thank you, Ms. Robertson, for agreeing to move up in the agenda.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You mean, you really didn't want to wait until 10, 20 to present?
I always last and I appreciate this. As you just indicated, the Santa Barbara School Districts received the intent to negotiate with California Schools Employee Association for the 2006-2007 school year. At this time, we're submitting our proposal for consideration for conference. And there were four items in particular that we requested to be considered. Typically, every year that we have reopeners, wages, health and welfare benefits are always included. And there's two other reopeners that we would like to work with with the classified staff and that is the Article VII, Section 6 Catastrophic Illness Leave Donation Program and developing a side letter of agreement regarding staffing ratios for clerical and custodial staff on all school sites. And this is the first opportunity for the board and the community to be able to see this proposal. And I'll come back before you again on August 8th for action.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Nope. Do we have any speakers?
No.
We thought we had a speaker. There are no members of the public here who are wishing to speak to this item? No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson.
You didn't take enough time, however. Can you tap dance?
I think since we have other people that we're also waiting for, we may have to ask you to go ahead and hopefully Mr. Williams will be available. Okay, so Mr. Powell, if you would like to make a presentation from the president of Get Oil Out, Inc., regarding the use of cleaner burning biodiesel in Santa Barbara County school buses.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name's John Abraham Powell. I'm the president of Get Oil Out, as you just mentioned. We're a local nonprofit. We've been serving Santa Barbara for 37 years now. I'm also a parent and I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the safety of school buses. As you know, school buses have long been considered the safest way to transport children from their homes to school and in many ways it still is. But recently, a number of studies have been conducted by agencies like the Environmental Protection Agency, UC Berkeley, the Natural Resources Defense Council, which have all concluded that there's a serious problem with school buses, a problem that has been harming children for years and will continue to do so until we take action. The problem I'm talking about is petroleum diesel exhaust. According to a recent EPA study, a child riding a school bus is being exposed to as much as 46 times the cancer risk considered significant by the EPA and under federal law. Forty-six times. Here are some other facts cited by this study. Over 40 individual chemical compounds in diesel exhaust have been separately listed as toxic air contaminants. The EPA and the California Air Resource Board identifies these chemicals as compounds that cause cancer. According to a recent study published by the Health Effects Institute, more than 98% of the particles emitted from diesel engines are fine particles less than one micron in diameter. Numerous studies have found that fine particles impair lung function, aggravate respiratory illnesses such as bronchitis and asthma, and are associated with premature death. Children are among those most susceptible to the health effects of diesel exhaust exposure because a child's lungs have narrower airways and children have faster metabolisms and faster breathing rates than adults. It is the children and their families that I'm here to represent today. School bus exhaust is putting their health at risk and it is time to take action. This exhaust is not just a problem for children riding on the buses, but for children, teachers, and school employees who are exposed to this exhaust in the parking areas for these buses. Again, according to the EPA, quote, "When, excuse me, when buses idle in the schoolyard, the exhaust can also pollute the air inside the school building and pose a health risk to children throughout the day." This problem has been considered serious enough by the EPA that it has instituted a program called Clean School Bus USA to address diesel exhaust exposure. One of the focuses of this program is to reduce the amount of public school bus idling, which poses a risk to anybody in the vicinity of the school buses while they're running. A number of states and municipalities have implemented programs to address this problem and it is time for Santa Barbara to do the same. Further, I think it is time that this elected body took a stand on the subject of schoolchildren's exposure to carcinogens. Now, I'm aware that this board does not operate the school buses in Santa Barbara schools, but rather contracts the bus service with Santa Barbara Transportation. I am here tonight to ask this board to officially request that Santa Barbara Transportation look into the issue of toxic exhaust in our school buses and to take corrective action as soon as possible. Now, I did not come here tonight to stop the school buses. Just the opposite, I came here to clean up the buses and to keep them running because I know a solution to the problem. In fact, the problem is not the buses themselves, the problem is the fuel that they are burning. Petroleum diesel is toxic and its exhaust is too, but there is a safe alternative to petroleum diesel that is currently being used by over 40 school bus fleets across the nation to specifically reduce children's exposure to toxic emissions. This fuel is non-toxic, biodegradable, and reduces toxic emissions by over 90%. The name of this fuel is biodiesel and it is a drop-in replacement for petroleum diesel. That is to say, it can be mixed with petroleum diesel, it will not harm the bus engines, and it can be used in our existing buses, not by new buses, but can be used in the existing buses with little or no modification necessary. I have personally used 100% biodiesel since, in all of my vehicles since 2001 and I know that it works. Our city council understands the dangers of diesel exhaust and they have taken action. They have been testing biodiesel in their street sweepers for the past two years. Based on the success of those tests, the council has now officially decided to use it in all of the city's diesel to use it in all of the city's diesel vehicles. If we're willing to use biodiesel to clean up our street sweepers, shouldn't we consider using it in the buses that carry the city's most precious cargo? Many other school districts across the country have already taken action to protect their children. The city of Berkeley, Warwick, Rhode Island, Missoula, Montana, Littleton, Colorado, Ann Arbor, Michigan, St. Louis, Missouri, and many others have made a switch to cleaner burning biodiesel. I think it is time for this board to take action, and I know that you all care deeply about our children's safety and our children because you went to the trouble of getting elected to do this largely thankless job that you're doing. So, all I'm going to ask of you is two strokes of the pen. That's all I'm here tonight to ask. First, please just ask Santa Barbara Transportation to determine if our children are being exposed to elevated levels of toxic exhaust in and around our school buses. And second, ask them to consider switching to a safer fuel like biodiesel. That's it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I was hoping to introduce our local environmental champion, who happens to be a city council member, but I think he was detained on city business. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. Do board members have?
Yeah, I have a question. Does the city found a source for the supply of biodiesel?
Yes, ma'am. McCormick's is a local fuel distributor. They've been carrying biodiesel for, I think, three years now. And they've been supplying the city's street sweepers for a couple of years. And it's been a successful program, and I know they have fuel available for, in Galida even, for, you know, buses or any other fleets that need biodiesel.
Is it comparable to the price of diesel?
At 20% biodiesel, which is what the city's using right now, the price is roughly the same with, you know, the price of... It's hard to say because the price of diesel fluctuates so radically all the time. But currently, I think it's within 10 cents a gallon at the current pricing.
So, no change is needed to the engine of the bus?
No. There's no changes to the engine. In old buses, which are the most polluting buses, they tend to have old fuel lines, which are made of rubber, and those need to be changed. And that's a very easy and cheap fix. The fuel lines are not inexpensive. But nothing to the engine.
My understanding is maintenance actually is easier? Is that something not true?
I'm not sure if it's easier or not, but in my experience, I've got about five years now using biodiesel in a truck and in two passenger vehicles. And the maintenance has been, you know, comparable with any other vehicle I've had, if not better.
Thank you.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Powell. Dr. Sarvis, it would certainly be worth the conversation with Santa Barbara Transportation to find out what kinds of expenses they would foresee in making this kind of conversion. But the other issue I would like to address with Santa Barbara Transportation is to find out what their idling times are at each of their stops and see if there's a way immediately that we could reduce those idle times.
In fact, I talked to DOS earlier today. Most of our students ride the metropolitan buses. However, we do have, as Mr. Powell said, the contract with Santa Barbara Transportation for a number of our elementary buses, and it's certainly a conversation worth having with them, if that's the board's direction.
I would certainly like to see us follow up on that, on really the two, and maybe this is the third, items that Mr. Powell raised, whether the students are in fact being exposed to toxic levels of pollutants, what the idling times are, I think we can assume that they are, and then also the possibility of looking into a different type of fuel. I'd like to thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. This is, I think, really worth taking a look at.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to add that there are grants available to help out with any costs associated with any kind of changes of this kind from the EPA. And Get Oil Out is also very interested in helping, if, you know, in any way that we can through fundraising and our volunteer efforts, so.
If you would give us some literature, it would be helpful.
Absolutely. I'll send some along. I have quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
I have a mission.
Ms. Rodriguez? I'm just assuming you have not already approached Santa Barbara Transportation. Is that correct?
I wanted to come here first and discuss it with you and, you know, have a mandate under your authority or not to do this before I, you know, went to talk to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we can get Mr. Schallenberger to help us with the effort.
That would be nice. Yeah, this seems like a very doable project. At the very least, we can do something, even if we can't do everything that we might want to. Okay, item F2. We have...
Yes, this is a request to address the board by the Hidden Valley Residents Association. Julia Reyes asked to speak to the board about possible development of the Hidden Valley property. The board has made no decisions about the property, but we're entering a period where we'll have considerable discussions about the options on the property and what the property can bring to the district. So, we're looking forward to productive ideas about the best use of the property. Shoot. I don't see you.
Yes.
There you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, and what is your name? Maida Paleus? Okay.
Come on up here.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maida.
Do you want me to spell my name now?
No, we have it on the letter. Thank you very much. And I want to point out that I guessed correctly, so I spelled it right. I do want to just preface this by reiterating what Dr. Sarvis pointed out, and that is, just so that when people are watching this in the public, that we, the board, has not yet seen the report from UNIDev with the final recommendations. And that will be coming before us. We will be having extensive discussion, and at this point, the board is not considering any particular recommendation or any particular proposal.
Well, thank you for letting us express our concerns. We know you haven't made your decision yet, but we thought it would be a good idea to start a conversation with you before something is cast in concrete. It's certainly easier to change or be involved in the decision-making process, perhaps. We're going to, we wanted to discuss a few different areas today. One is access. The second is concerns about high-density housing. The third is concerns about teachers and essential personnel needs. Fourth, community concerns. And fifth, potential conflict of interest with the UNIDev study. The Hidden Valley Residents Organization strongly opposes any high-density housing project on the school board property located in the Los Pacitas Valley, commonly known as the Hidden Valley site. We believe that this density concept is inappropriate for this semi-rural area and will also result in serious overcrowding of local roads and intersections, thus adversely affecting the quality of life for the hundreds of people who make this area their home. Access. There is no precedent for high-density development of this sort in an isolated semi-rural area with minimal accessibility. There is no ready access to commercial services in Hidden Valley. High-density housing will result in increased traffic at vital intersections that are already operating below city standards. The obvious conclusion is that a project that promotes high-density is inappropriate for this area. With regard to high-density housing, the city has indicated that high-density is appropriate in the downtown core, not in semi-rural areas. In the matter of proposed high-density housing, it is well documented that high-density housing is traditionally built and is most effective in an area where occupants can walk or take public transportation. This also relieves traffic congestion and is one of the primary reasons such units are planned. High-density housing in our neighborhood is incompatible with the scale and urban design. By virtue of the valley's isolation, residents must use an automobile in order to reach schools, retail, and commercial services. A high-density project would exacerbate traffic instead of alleviating it. The effects of cramming high-density housing in a small secluded tract would drastically change the quality of life for all inhabitants of Hidden Valley. All exiting traffic from Hidden Valley must utilize La Cumbre-Modoc and Los Pacitas-Modoc intersections, which are currently impacted at Level D. This is below the city's standard for streets. There are no plans by the city for improvements for any of these intersections. Veronica Springs Road, a substandard county road with neither curbs nor sidewalks, would soon be used as a shortcut to Los Pacitas to avoid Modoc gridlock. The connecting of Palermo Road to Los Pacitas would also result in a shortcut, repeating the Stanley Drive scenario in Samarcan, where cars cut through residential areas in order to avoid impacted intersections. A high-density project would also negate the city planning for the Los Pacitas Valley, which shows single-family residential housing. A high-density project will result in the deterioration that occurs in places that are overbuilt and overused. With regard to teachers and essential personnel needs, we are told that this project is needed to subsidize local teachers and essential personnel by affording them low-cost housing. With the current and projected decline in school enrollment, it is hard to see any legitimate need for a high-density project. According to UNIDev's own survey, teachers desire a single-family detached homes with yards. This would be E3 zoning, according to city planning, the same density that currently exists in the Hidden Valley neighborhood. This land represents a unique opportunity to build the type of housing that the teachers want. Funds from the sale of this land also represent a unique opportunity to set up a loan program, such as those currently operating in the Compton, Pasadena, and Los Angeles school districts, enabling the purchase of housing in other areas of the city closer to schools. Community concerns. A high-density plan would present serious safety concerns for emergency services to access our area. The evacuation of a school, which is the Santa Barbara Christian School on Modoc Road, two large senior residences, Valley Verdi and Vista Del Monte, as well as the residence of Hidden Valley, would be virtually impossible. The banks and adjacent hillsides are unstable and subject to geologic creep. Valley Verdi recently suffered a huge cave-in along a broad area of the creek, destroying a road. A high-pressure gas line crosses at Royal Borough Creek in the area and may be on the school property. A major sewer line runs through the site, which serves the entire valley. The site is in a high, potential high-fire hazard area. The creek marks an earthquake fault, and another fault is purported to run through the center of the property. The hillsides are subject to the city's slope-density ordinance. The area is in a 100-year floodplain. A high-density project at this site sets a precedent for adjacent land to be developed at the same density, adversely affecting other neighborhoods as well. Potential conflict of interest with UNIDev's study. UNIDev's own survey indicated that the type of housing desired by the school staff was single-family detached homes. UNIDev stated in public meetings that they do not construct projects of just one type of housing. This conflicts with the results of their teacher survey. UNIDev refused to answer questions about access, even though their site map clearly shows access to Palermo Road. Evasive behavior results in distrust when UNIDev should be working together with the community. UNIDev misled the public into believing 50% of the teachers leave because they cannot afford housing in Santa Barbara. When asked to correlate their numbers with state retention turnover statistics, UNIDev was unable to do so. The Public Policy Institute of California article, February 6, 2006, stated that teachers leave for many reasons, including starting and raising a family, changing occupations, et cetera. The authors of this research publication conclude that professional development programs are a successful, cost-effective way to increase teacher retention. They also state that this approach to improve teacher retention is better and more cost-effective than raising teacher salaries. UNIDev has a history of building high-density housing for profit. The higher the density, the higher their monetary returns. Our residents who have visited the UNIDev-Cal-State Channel Islands project have described it as an abomination and a blight on the community. In summary, Hidden Valley area includes homes occupied by working families, a school, and several large retirement homes. Traffic is already a problem in the area, and a high-density project would exacerbate this problem. A survey of over 300 residents of Hidden Valley showed that single-family detached homes were acceptable on the site. Such a project could be similar to neighboring Hidden Valley homes or similar to the Hidden Oaks Development's single-family homes, which were profitable and which were configured in keeping with the density for which this area was designed. Thus, the traffic generated would be kept within reasonable limits, a compromise that would protect the quality of life in our community rather than degrade it. If the board chooses not to develop the property for staff housing, then the profits from the sale of this property could be used to establish a loan program. We welcome an opportunity to work with the Santa Barbara School Board to reach a mutually beneficial solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paleus. We have additional speakers. We have eight speakers. Okay. Okay, each speaker will have three minutes. And we will ask you to adhere to that timeline since we are running over just a little bit in terms of the time that we've allotted, and we also need to get to the next item. But I think we have time for everybody to have three minutes, if you adhere to your timeline. Okay. And I just want to remind you that if you haven't been to the meeting before, there is a light on the podium. It turns green when you begin speaking, and then when it turns red, that means your time is up. And I will give you a 30-second notice as well.
We'll start with Robert Albright, followed by Rosemary Burka.
My name is Robert Albright. I've lived in Palermo Drive for 42 years. And of whatever projects you decide upon, our main concern is Palermo Drive. We don't call that Palermo Drive. We call it the Palermo Freeway or Palermo Drag Strip. And what we want to know is, what are your plans for future safety of Palermo Drive? Does it mean stop signs that you can put every third intersection? That would certainly slow down the traffic, and it would deter the flow of traffic into other areas. So, that's the question that I'm asking the board, is that they consider safety, future safety for Palermo Drive? If they plan to make it a through road or whatever, even today, without a through road?
Mr. Albright, it is customary for the board not to engage in discussion during public comment. However, I will remind you that we do not have a project before, so we have not considered any kind of mitigating factors.
Well, what I'm asking is just that they look into the safety of Palermo Drive.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Albright.
Rosemary Burka, followed by John Brooks.
Thank you. I just have a short question, and I think you've probably already answered it. It's just that has the board decided or made a decision on the Hidden Valley property and how it will be developed, or are all the items still on the table to discuss?
All the items are still on the table, and in fact, we have not even reviewed all of them at this point.
Okay, thank you.
John Brooks, followed by Helen Campbell.
This is also in regards to Hidden Valley property. As school board members, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You're supposed to be pillars of the community, not destroyers. The negative effects of high-density housing are well-known and well-documented, just like they are in high-density classrooms. The only winners of high-density housing are the profiteers who build them. Which brings me to UNIDev. Giving them $125,000 for a feasibility study is like giving the National Rifle Association $125,000 to study gun control. The outcome is foretold. I think the school board should think twice before alienating itself... I think the school board should think twice before alienating itself from the Santa Barbara community, whose justifiability and hatred of high-density housing and misuse of public lands is reaching fever pitch.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Helen Campbell, followed by John Catfield.
I have just a few questions to ask, and that is that the law states that property from government agencies that is for sale must be first offered to other government agencies. If units on this property are sold to individuals, how is this law complied with? The next one is, will the school board consider a land swap as suggested by Councilman Williams at the joint meeting? And will the EIR report be done on the development of the site? And the Board of Directors of Hidden Valley Residents Association requests a copy of the initial studies for the proposed development on the school property located at the end of Palermo Drive. Upon completion of this document, we would be happy to pick it up at your Garden Street office. We also request to be notified of the date and time of the scoping hearing for any proposed project on this site, as we wish to ensure that secret process is being followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
John Catfield, followed by Perry Longo. Is -- is -- John? Okay. Perry Longo, followed by Lena Anderson.
Good evening, and I know you don't have to answer this question right now because of where you are in the process, but given the traffic constraints at the major intersections of Las Pascidas-Mooc 101 and Lacumbra-Mooc 101, now at Level D operating standards, and we have a lot of projects that are proposed for the valley, wondering if the school board would support a comprehensive and cumulative study of the traffic problems before making any decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longo.
Lena Anderson, followed by Rudolph Hernandez.
My question concerns the UNIDev development, and my question is, does any high-density proposed by UNIDev actually address the needs and desires of the teachers and the staff? Didn't the first survey indicate that the teachers wanted single-family detached houses? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Rudolph Hernandez.
I live on Torino Drive, 3704 Northwest Corner, the busiest intersection in the valley. Okay, the valley, I'm not here to ask any questions, I'm just going to say what I've seen up to now. Okay, I've seen that valley when it was rural, I mean rural, walnut trees, quince trees, lemon trees. I used to walk through that area with my BB gun when I was a kid. Okay, now, it's a zoo. Palermo Drive up and down is posted at 25 miles an hour. That's a joke. People are busting intersections 25, 30, 35 miles per hour. I don't know if any of you have ever busted at intersection at those speeds. I have. Anywhere from 2 up to 25 miles per hour. You get up to 15, 20 miles an hour and bust through an intersection, you're going fast. Okay, the reason I said this, because I'm right there on the northwest corner, I see everything that's going on, and I've driven to many a Code 2, Code 3 call, so I know what it's like to go through an intersection. And like I say, that Palermo Drive is posted at 25 miles per hour, coming down, coming back up. Okay, something magic happens when they reach Pescadero and Palermo. Pedal to the metal. Okay, by the time they go by me, they're going 30, 35 miles an hour. Ditto going back up. Okay, going up and down Torino Drive, not too much of a problem there. Okay, the only problem is with the buses. The buses are so long, they scrape bottom. Okay, and they have to stop at Torino and Palermo, go across the street in front of my house, and stop again. Okay, geez, I lost my gene of thought there, but anyway, I would like to see, I know people have to live somewhere, but I don't think this is the place, because we were involved in a situation there.
30 seconds? I'm sorry, go ahead, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, because we paid taxes on a school that never was built, so they put up, the appeasement kind of was Adam's school. That was supposed to be temporary. It doesn't look too temporary now, but if you look close enough, it is, they're all So, okay, but as far as cars going up and down Torino Drive, that doesn't seem to be much of a problem. If they're going 15, 20, 25 miles an hour, they're going to get airborne, come crashing down, or crash up and come down.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes or concludes a public comment on this item. I would invite all of you who clearly are quite interested in this topic to continue to attend our meetings and our...
Tentatively, the UNIDev feasibility study is scheduled for August 8, which is our first meeting in August. We expected it at this meeting. It wasn't quite ready. You know, we don't want to hand out things at the meeting. We want to be able to let the board and the public take a look at things well in advance, so we have the 72-hour notice requirement that we want to adhere to, and I believe that report will be ready. I believe it will be August 8, but we will notify the association. And I'd like to make a comment. I appreciate this presentation. I believe that this is a sincere attempt at an honest discussion with the board about these issues. Now, I can't say the same for the website that has some inaccuracies and refers to my board as thugs. Please take a look at that, and please remove that first statement that the Santa Barbara School Board has sent a proposal to the city council to build 94 high-density homes on the Hidden Valley property. Whoever told you that got it wrong. That's just not true. So, please, take a look at the website. But nevertheless, I believe, you know, the issues that the board just heard, traffic control, traffic safety, sale of public land, EIR, SEQA, I mean, those are all valid issues, and those are all issues that we need to address as we're discussing this. This first presentation will be the first shot at that. We will have a number of meetings this fall where we do talk about the different options, and when these recommendations, as we call them, come to us, it won't be, well, we recommend you do this. It'll be, given this option, this is what you would expect to gain for sale of the property. Given this option, this is what you would expect for market rate development of the property, that kind of a thing. And then it's up to the board to consider it carefully, to consider public input as well, and to make a decision, make the best decision.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Othrigas.
Could you also maybe address the fact that this all goes through the local planning policies and land use review process? It's not a decision that this board simply makes because we think we need a certain kind of housing on a certain kind of property. We don't get to make that final decision.
Yes. I think you made that clear, Ms. Othrigas, and I think that's an important point to make clear as well. So I would invite the community to remain involved, as I know you will, and again, we'll be hearing from UNIDev on, at least scheduled, to be hearing from UNIDev on August 8, so we will undoubtedly see you again, and hopefully things... And I too want to echo Dr. Sarvas's compliments on the presentation, and also I would like to thank those of you who did speak for keeping your comments brief and to the point. It helps us to get through the discussion much more quickly.
Well, I might also say that people could also simply watch that presentation, and that at the time that we ask for public hearings and public comments, then we'll be asking people to come forward anyway.
Yes.
And that won't happen, well, you know, here, we're on a school schedule. That won't happen until September.
So, and again, a reminder that you can all feel free to submit written documents as well. So, thank you very much. We will move on then, even a few minutes ahead of schedule, to Item F3, interim report on the facilities master plan update, and I know we have several people here for this item as well.
Oh, well, this is an interim report. You know, our history on facilities master plan is rather long at this point. I started looking back through board agendas, and I went back to May of 1999 when we started talking about master plan, and then we eventually invited in the State Department of Education. Some of this, you may remember, when we had a presentation made by Jim Bush, Assistant Director, School Facilities and Planning Division from the California Department of Education, facilities and housing issues to be addressed through a master planning process. And at that meeting in March of 2001, board members identified and discussed facilities and housing issues that needed to be addressed through the master planning process, and the board went ahead with an RFP, and in fact, contracted with the firm to produce a master plan. At the time that that was delivered, that coincided with the increase in construction costs and the lack of funds to complete a number of elementary projects, and a number of things were still left hanging. Among them, Santa Barbara Community Academy's permanent home, OAS's permanent home, Santa Barbara Charter's permanent home, and there were some other issues as well. So, having these program needs, then, we contracted a year ago with Pat Salee to update that master plan. We had some of the basic information that we could use as the foundation for that plan, but we needed to update it, and we needed to look at various alternatives, and Pat, I know you're saying, Pat Eston has done a masterful job of that. She could go farther, but we decided that we needed to come to the board and ask for direction, so that if you want more information about any of those options, if there are any of those particular options you want to explore, and you want more direction about those, now's the time to say it, so that we can tell Pat what to do next. Dave?
I'm sorry, can I just comment very, very briefly? Just in light of our previous agenda item, I want to make clear for any public who might be, who might watch this later, that when we say facilities and housing, we're not talking about the kind of housing development that might be proposed under the previous item. We're talking about housing of educational programs of schools, et cetera. We're really talking about giving schools facilities and giving them a home, so I don't want that to be confusing to any of the public.
And a further caveat, we're not going to make any of these decisions tonight, so if you're here to find out what happens to OAS's future, or what happens to Santa Barbara Community Academy, or Cesar Chavez's future, that won't be, there will be some discussion about the options tonight, but the board won't have much of an opportunity to have their own discussion about it, so we'll be scheduling this in the fall as well. We have a busy fall coming up. You won't want to miss it.
Mr. Hett Young?
Yes, thank you both. I just wanted to make it perfectly clear to members of the public that may be watching that this is an interim report. You're correct, it is not the final master plan. I think tonight you'll see that Pat Salee and associates have done a fantastic job of trying to gather as much public input as possible, as much input from the schools as possible. There's been numerous meetings, they're outlined in my cover memo, and at the bottom of my memo, just to tell you, the purpose of this report is to give a board a chance to review the document, ask questions of Pat Salee, and tonight, or and, a future meeting, give us correction, direction on what you see in the report, things you like, things you don't like. Basically, the last report, two of the criticisms were, we did not have enough input from the public and the teachers and the parents. We tried to make sure that we did everything we could to get that. Another thing is, the board really didn't see that report until it was final. We don't want that to happen. We want you to see it, we want you to be able to make comments on it, review it, and give us any course change or direction that you think the final report should take. And with that, I'll introduce Pat Salee.
So, forward and back, is it on? Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Pat Salee, Pat Salee and Associates, and yes, I do have an associate, Janice Thompson, my good friend and colleague. We both worked together for about nine years at the city of Santa Barbara, and have dabbled in planning things for many years since then. So, let's see. What I'd like to do, not exactly following the order of the interim report, but hit on the high points and give you an overview, starting with some background about the districts, including just the history of facilities, and appreciate the clarification, if the word "house" or "housing" is used, it's not meant for people to sleep, et cetera, it's meant for educational programs and students. Like to talk a little bit about the two districts and the diversity of programs that are offered, what's happening with enrollment, which is pretty interesting these days. Talk a little bit about financial information, that's something we expect to have more of in the final report. And then, the bulk of the presentation will focus on options, and we have spent a lot of time talking about those programs that share sites, and there are about five sites that house two and even three programs, and one of our goals is to see if we can consolidate wherever we can. I think it's pretty obvious that's more efficient. We have also solicited comments, as Dave said, on individual sites, sometimes with more success than others. Hopefully, in the next few months before we finalize this, we can really round out that information. It's a really good opportunity to do so. First, some history, and much of this is courtesy of Lanny Ebstein, and I saw him here early, there he is in the corner, thank you, Lanny. Pretty interesting, the districts incorporated in 1866, and about 15 years prior to that, it was actually the city council that ran the public schools. 1795 was the first public school in this area, and that was the second public school in California. San Jose had the first. The very first school built was Lincoln, where the farmer's market now is on Saturday morning, and the downtown commuter lot. That property was sold in the '70s to much hoopla in the community. That still is heard today. 1884 Franklin was the first elementary on the east side, and by 87, three years later, there were five K through 12 public schools, somewhere just over 1,200 students, and there were about 20 teachers. It was roughly a 50 to 1 ratio, something that I don't think we'd go for anymore. 1890, the first Santa Barbara High School was built. It was built in its current location, about 34 years later, and in the early '90s, there were three construction bonds that were passed, and three elementaries were built. Garfield is now the Adult Ed Shot Center. In the period 1872 to 1959, roughly 80 years... In the period 1872 to 1959, roughly 80 years, there were 20 bond measures placed on the ballot, and 18 of those passed, and many of them garnering 90% plus of the vote. It was really a time the community supported their schools. After World War I, there was a flurry of construction activity, two junior highs and three elementary schools. After World War II, another flurry of activity, a high school, San Marcos, off Turnpike, La Colina, and then four elementary schools. And some of these schools moved location. Washington is one that moved, McKinley moved, already said, Santa Barbara High moved. In the 60s, two more schools were built, in the Gleta Valley, if, as everyone, I think, knows, the, from the 60s on, the valley really boomed, and it slowed down a bit when water was a constraint, but has boomed. And Gleta Valley was built first, then Dos Pueblos, way on the west end of the district. In 2000, a couple of years prior to that, Measure R, Rebuild Roosevelt, had passed. It was a $6 million bond, and in 2000 Roosevelt was reopened, it's a very beautiful school. And since that time, two other bonds, the I-98 Elementary Bond and the Measure V Secondary District Bonds, have, were approved by the voters, and many, many improvement projects have been constructed. A lot of the photos on these slides are pictures of those improvements. In terms of facilities planning, as was mentioned, 2003, facilities master plan was completed. It was rather a top-down, and not to imply this group dictated what was in it, it was more the consultant expressing their recommendations as to what should be done, but I think, as we've learned in this community, bottom-up is a much better way of planning. There were four basic recommendations, three of them were in the negatives, so to speak. Do not consider combining Adams with Lacumbra Junior High. Leave Washington as a neighborhood school and maintain the Gate program. Do not consider relocation of the Charter School, that's at Gleta Valley now, or Open Alternative School, which is at La Colina, to Washington or Monroe. So, that would have been a pretty major relocation from the western end of the districts over to the Mesa. But in the positive, assume that some Franklin students would transfer to Cesar Chavez and to the academy, which at the time was located here, if I remember correctly. I think that's right. And one other thing that has a bearing on some of the recommendations or options we'll be discussing today is the idea that the capacity at the Franklin campus, that is not a big school physically, is 800 students, and presently, with Cesar Chavez and Franklin students, that capacity has exceeded, which is one of the issues we're trying to address. So, one of the first things we did as we got into the facilities master plan update was to update the previous mission statement. Basically, we're trying to develop plans for facilities that help students achieve their highest potential and provide equal opportunity for learning, clean, attractive, efficient facilities. We want to plan for facilities, not in a vacuum, not myopically, we want to look at the big picture, what is happening on the south coast in terms of enrollment, what's happening in terms of retaining teachers, as you were just discussing. And then, just continually needing to assess what are the needs of facilities, and I'll talk in a moment about transfers and inter and intra-district transfers. It is this very changing situation. The goals, as we have put together this master plan, we're trying, or this update, we're trying to be respectful of all the work that has gone before us, both in terms of the 2003 master plan, but also the work and study that has gone into the two most recent bonds, the elementary and secondary bonds, and the board has, has a list of projects for the remaining funds in each of those bonds, and they are reflected on the slide. For the elementary school, permanent homes, permanent facilities for both Open Alternative and Santa Barbara Charter, those were mentioned in the bond language in 1998. That is a high priority in this master plan update. Libraries at Adams and Washington School are high priorities. And then, finding permanent facilities, consolidated facilities, ideally for the academy, is also a high priority. For the secondary district, there have been many, many Americans with Disabilities Act projects at all the secondary schools. State matching funds, two pools, and some other work at Dos Pueblos. There are many code compliance projects, when you have an older district, at least older by California standards, there are a lot of things that need to be brought up to code. And then, many infrastructure projects. Drainage out at Dos Pueblos has been a big issue for decades, and that is being addressed. Those things aren't very glamorous, but they're very important. So, we are trying to be very respectful of these previous priorities, and we're incorporating them. In terms of broad-brush goals for maybe the schools or programs that weren't mentioned on the previous slides, our goal is to, that all schools have safe learning environments. That's pretty self-explanatory. Ideally, portables that are less than 25 years old, portables with water and some of those basic amenities. Libraries, not in the sense of freestanding libraries for each school, but an adequate library, ideally not shared with another program. Adequate infrastructure and internet connectivity. In this day and age, it's essential that we teach our kids how to surf the web and the like. And we are striving to avoid splitting any programs, and if programs are split...
No.
Oh, excuse me. Programs that may be at two sites, consolidating them to the extent feasible, just administratively in terms of taking advantage of the skills and talents of teaching staff. So much easier to give the students the best if you have everyone on one site. So, shifting to a little background on the districts, everyone has seen this slide. The large colored area, all of this comprises the secondary district, it's quite large, and this green area here, which pretty much coincides with the city of Santa Barbara boundaries, is the elementary district. These other districts, Montecito, Cold Spring, Hope, Gleta Union, are elementary districts that feed into the secondary district. There are a lot of programs that are offered throughout the 21 schools, I think it is, maybe it's 22. There are neighborhood schools at the elementary level. When we did community meetings, there's a lot of interest in trying to serve the immediate community and, and work together with communities. There are three charter schools. There are two, what we call schools of choice, Open Alternative and Santa Barbara Community Academy, the primary grades are located adjacent to this building. Secondary, we have basically four junior highs, four high schools, one of which is a continuation school, La Cuesta. There are five academies offered at the various schools, and Dos Pueblos has a fairly new international back laureate program. So, there is a lot of diversity in the types of programs. Also, all schools offer a Gate or Gifted and Talented Education Program. Elementary schools offer after-school programs, many of them have preschools, student teachers, tutors, a lot is done to try to help kids reach their potential. Secondary schools have different needs, counseling, ROP, and Santa Barbara City College Dual Enrollment. A lot of our kids graduate with, with, you know, half a year's worth of credits, some enter college as sophomores. I've never understood why they want to do that, but here's some high schoolers. Okay. Enrollment, we fully intended, when we went into this, to study past enrollment trends. Davis Hayden was involved in this, very helpful, and project out to help us see which facilities would be more constrained, which would have excess room, to help us in our facilities planning. But basically, we found it's really hard to do that. These are very, I don't know, changing times in terms of what's happening. And actually, when I put this slide together, it surprised me, these figures, oops, sorry, these figures over here, they're, the districts as a whole have changed very little over the last five years. That is not the perception out there. And the elementary district, give you the figures, has ranged from just over 5,800, that was in the, this last year, and the high was actually in 2002 to 2003. And this was looking at figures over a four-year period. The second year was actually the highest, and the trend does appear to be going down slowly in the elementary district. However, the number of kindergarteners went up this last year. That's, makes it really hard to do any enrollment projections that have any sort of, you can have a whole lot of confidence in. The junior highs have varied from about almost 3,400 in '05-'06 to a high of almost 3,800. That was in 2001, 2002. So, it does appear the trend is down in junior highs. The high schools, the highest number, the 7,200, was this last year, and the graduating class, of course, the one my daughter's in, was very big, and the class filling in behind it is not as big, but it's hard to say how that is going to play out over time. Kids come and go from private schools, there's a lot of fluctuation. So, this is something, when we said earlier, part of the mission statement, to watch what is happening and look at external factors, just overall, what is happening with enrollment, where kids are going, and we have a lot of data in the report about which schools are gaining, which are losing. But all told, there has not been a great change over the last four years. In terms of financial information, mention the three bonds of recent years. Other sources of funding, developer fees, that's typically a per-square-foot basis, it's usually not a huge amount of money. I mean, people perceive there's a lot of development going on, on the south coast, but there really isn't that much, at least relative to other areas. That is typically not a huge pot of money. There are state joint use and other kinds of grants, state matching grants, site fundraising, this district has been very successful over the years. Peabody, the high schools for pools and the like, there's been a lot of site fundraising. And one other thing that you were just discussing, the previous agenda item, the feasibility study that is tentatively scheduled for August 8th, is looking at the Tatum and Hidden Valley properties, four options for each of them. The idea behind that is to, in order to best serve the students, what is the best way to, to use these assets to the fullest? And it, that will also be a very interesting discussion, but potentially, depending on what happens with those, there could be capital money that is, comes to the district, one-time capital funds, there could be an ongoing revenue stream, if there is some lease of land, long-term leases. There is some real potential there, which of course has to be balanced with neighborhood interests. The Hidden Valley properties in the city of Santa Barbara, they, as Ms. Rodriguez pointed out, will go through the city review process, the Tatum properties in the county in the second district, and would go through the county's process. We don't know how that's going to turn out, but potentially could result in some funds to help implement what is ultimately included in the update. So, here's Tatum, about 23 acres, this is right near San Marcos High School, the Vond Shopping Center, next to, is it El Rancho School?
El Camino.
El Camino School, and adjacent to San Marcos Grores. Hidden Valley in the city of Santa Barbara, you just heard about that, at the terminus of Palermo Drive. This is taken from the church property up above, the church is on Veronica Springs, it's a very pretty site. So, with that, go into the recent process. First of all, as has been mentioned, we worked very closely with what we called the ad hoc committee, and this, I feel, was a very beneficial process. The superintendent was involved, two board members, Nancy Harder, Laura Malikoff, the two assistant superintendents, bringing to the table a lot of knowledge about the two districts and the individual sites. Director of Maintenance and Operations, Dave Hetjank. Key staff as needed, Davis Hayden, as I mentioned, helped us quite a bit, and he's relatively new to this, so brought a fresh perspective. And we met a total of 20 times, typically about two hours each. And those were lively, very imaginative, and I feel very productive meetings, and the collective knowledge in the room, when we would talk about the various school sites and the districts as a whole, and we tried to keep both in mind, was, was very productive. As was mentioned, the study was initiated last year in February. We held three community meetings in May, and is unfortunately, sometimes the case, no matter how much you advertise meetings, we sent flyers home with the elementary kids, a call-out to the secondary, display ads in four different newspapers. We only got about 50 people total, which is not nearly enough. So, at that point, we decided to take the show to the people in the school sites. We also, through the course of this process, have been before the board six times with updates, this would be the seventh. So, in the interest of getting input, we have met repeatedly with various school leadership, and by that, typically, site council members. I've toured about 10 different sites with, mostly with the principal, or where, shared sites with both principals. We have tried to get a lot of input from the people who live and work at these sites. Two meetings have been held with the city of Santa Barbara Council, as well as a couple follow-up meetings, and the elementary and secondary principals have provided a lot of input over about a 10-month period, culminating in late April, in a couple-hour brainstorm session we had, that many of these options you see today came out of that meeting. So, I'll talk about the rest of the process a little later, but as Dave said, our intent is to put the options out there, hear from the public over the next couple of months, hear from the board, and then get board direction. Which of these options do you think have the most potential? And there's still work to be done. A case in point, if open alternative, or, there is only one option relating to open alternative, and that is to retain them at La Colina, there is still a lot of work to be done in terms of what would go where, because they have some real facility needs. They, they, all of their administrative functions are in one small area, and that really doesn't work in the long term. So, in the next iteration, assuming the board agreed with that determination that that's the place to be, we would have much more information, probably some conceptual site plans, things like that, so you'd really know what it would take and what it might cost to implement that. So, moving into the, the options for the programs that share sites. Generally, we're trying to utilize face, space efficiently, and consolidate programs where we can. We're trying to be cognizant of an individual program's needs, if they share a site and are going to remain there, what the two or three schools' needs are, and then, what are the needs of the district as a whole? And this has been a lot of the discussion at the ad hoc committee meetings. So, what we have done is brainstormed what we feel are feasible options, and we've, we've asked, okay, which programs, which schools, with this particular option or that option, which ones would it affect? Would it achieve these basic goals right here, plus the goals talked about earlier? And then, what are the basic implementation steps? And what we've included in the tables near the end are just basic steps. As I said, there's still more work to be done in that area, but it would take a lot of work to flesh out every single one of those options. We want to get a read on which ones are the most viable and do the best job of meeting the goals, and then we'll do more work on those. Here are some of the considerations. Current agreements, for example, Cesar Chavez has a memorandum of under- Current agreements, for example, Cesar Chavez has a memorandum of understanding, limiting them to 200. Long-term, they'd like to have more, but for now, those are the rules, so to speak. What's happening with student enrollment at a particular site? Is their construction planned or underway? How the campus is used presently? How is it working if, if two programs are sharing a site? Portables, there are some schools that have portables well in excess of 25 years. And what is the plan, the disposition of those, that we have to factor in, in the long term? And then, oh, transportation, for example, the community academy buses students to the, the older students, to, some of them, to the Lacumbra site. Are there other transportation issues like that? And generally, just the condition of facilities. So, the first shared site that we focused on is Franklin and Cesar Chavez on the east Option one, status quo, basically. Cesar Chavez remains at Franklin, which would affect, obviously, the two school programs. As I mentioned earlier, this is one campus that I think by anyone's account would be considered over capacity. And Franklin's enrollment has declined some in the last few years. As I mentioned, Cesar Chavez would like to grow. They, I believe, that's one of the schools has like six lunch periods through the day. You know, and that's sometimes the case here, where kids are eating lunch at 10:45 in the morning, just, that's the only way to accommodate them. That's the kind of thing we're trying to address as part of this. So, not ideal, but if this were to be the case, just leave the two programs as they are, what, if the board is interested in that, once they hear from the public, of course. And this would be like September, when we expect that direction to be given. Thank you.
Our technology knows when you leave the room.
Thank you. The next option is the idea of relocating Cesar Chavez somewhere nearby. And the reason for the nearby is, that school is one of the ones that serves their immediate community to a great, great degree. A lot of kids walking and biking. And to relocate them at any distance creates all sorts of new transportation problems, community problems, not something that is advisable. And allow their, Cesar Chavez's enrollment to increase. If they went somewhere else where there was more room, they could increase as they'd like to do, two classrooms per grade. The obvious school nearby is Cleveland. Cleveland's enrollment has been declining. As a matter of fact, it has the lowest enrollment of all the neighborhood elementary schools. You have to look at capacity when you say that, but still, there is some room there. There's also a pretty major construction project going on right now. Again, has to be taken into consideration. Option three, the idea of splitting Cesar Chavez into two sites, Franklin and Cleveland, going, that would go against one of the goals we have, which is to consolidate programs. It's still, in our opinion, is a feasible option. It may not be the optimal one. Would affect the three schools again. And then finally, the fourth option is the idea of if incoming Franklin students, a kindergartner that may have younger siblings, or a student coming who's in third grade and moving from another area, if there were a program to try to shift those incoming students, they have no particular allegiance to Franklin or Cleveland, they're new to the area, or new elementary students, shifting them, like a classroom a year, to Cleveland, you start alleviating the, the student capacity issues at Franklin. It would take a while. If every year a kindergarten class shifted to Cleveland, after a while, the Cleveland facility would be used more efficiently. There'd be fewer kids on the campus of Franklin and Cesar Chavez. And with some time, and we recognize many of these will take some phasing, we would be able to achieve, we, the Franklin community would be happier, they'd have more room, Cesar Chavez could grow as they'd like to, to complete their program. And Cleveland would be, I think it's safe to say, very happy to receive more students. So those are four options. Eventually, we'd like to get direct, direction. Couple of them go off the table, one or two that you'd like us to focus on. That's the kind of thing we're looking for when we, we revisit this in a month or two. Galita Valley and Santa Barbara Charter. Santa Barbara Charter is one of the schools mentioned in the I-98 bond. We really only found that there was one option for this school. They, to serve the Galita community, moving very far from there, that would be pretty disruptive in terms of the families that are focused in that area. They, they have facilities in one portion of Galita Valley. Many of them are portables, similar to what's shown here, although they have done a nice job of softening the appearance of the portables. These two principals work very, very well together, and assuming the board agrees, yes, let's keep them there. This, this is one of the options that will take, definitely take some work, because the idea of having a permanent office in a more prominent location, there are some options, some possible locations that we've put forward, but we really have to work some with the architect, Mr. Hetjank, to see what's best, what's the budget, all those sorts of things. So this will take some work, but we, we believe it's doable. La Cuesta, this is very interesting. They are now at four sites, the four high schools, and they have two, excuse me, four classrooms at La Colina Junior High in the northwest corner. Now, we haven't talked about the academy yet, it's next, as I recall. But if the academy were to vacate this adjacent site here, right now they have K through three, the primary grades, that facility with some modification could work very well for La Cuesta. And that, this solution would obviously benefit La Cuesta. They are very interested in consolidating, just, their program would run so much more efficiently, and the quality of teaching they would be able to give the students would improve, just by virtue of being able to utilize the experts more efficiently. This would also free up space at four high schools, and, or three high schools, and La Colina, space that is really needed. So it's potentially a win-win. Of course, it's predicated on the idea of the K through three of the community academy moving, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Option two, reducing La Cuesta from four to two sites. This is not ideal in the sense of, from La Cuesta's perspective, they'd like to have everyone together and have more of a sense of community, but stands to reason, two sites are easier to administer and assign teaching staff than four are. And also, if two sites were vacated, we don't know which two it would be, that's the kind of thing we'd have to figure out in this intervening time. The two campuses where La Cuesta had been located and they vacate, they've, would pick up two to four, or six, or whatever number of classrooms that they really need. So this potentially doesn't go all the way to solving. La Cuesta's are meeting their goals, but it would certainly help, and it would help the secondary schools that they would vacate. La Colina houses three programs, Open Alternative and two La Cuesta programs, Community Day and Los Alturas. They're all under, those two are under the umbrella of La Cuesta. If Community Day and Los Alturas, as part of La Cuesta, moved to Ortega Street or somewhere else, that would free up four classrooms that Open Alternative and La Colina could backfill and use for their programs. And they're using space pretty efficiently these days, and having some elbow room, both those schools would really help. It's important to note, Open Alternative, they've submitted a lot of material, done, definitely done their homework, and will include all that material, all the submittals we've had, will include in the final master plan update. But there are a lot of needs that Open Alternative has internally, you know, teacher, nursing space, there's just a lot of things that would also be fleshed out in, in this next couple of months period. But the big issue is at least allowing for four classrooms to be freed up and used by the other two programs, then you'd only have two programs there, far superior to having Lacumbra Junior High. This is, we spent a lot of time talking about this issue. Lacumbra has had in the past well over 1,000 students, portables everywhere, apparently students in the basement, et cetera. The numbers have fluctuated in recent years. It was a middle school for a couple of years, and the, they had about 405 students this last year, projected to be somewhere on, in the, in the order of 450. This coming year, that number may have even gone up. They also share the site with the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade of the academy. They have one wing. They share some facilities, library, et cetera. That is a two-year situation, excuse me. The situation with the fourth through sixth at the academy is through the end of this next school year. So, the first option would be status quo again. Retain the primary kids here, or next door, and the upper grades at Lacumbra. If so, there are some improvements that would be possible to make things better, especially for the academy students at Lacumbra. And if the board is interested in that, we will detail those much more than we have so far. The second option is if the whole academy moved over to Lacumbra. It is somewhere on the order of at 50% capacity, maybe 60% currently. It's a big building, has a lot of room. There's some logistics. Where would the additional, you know, the primary students go? They have to be on the first floor by state ed code. It's not completely straightforward. But that's something that if the board's interested in this option, we can flesh that out and figure out where would the best place be for the academy at Lacumbra? And, you know, ensuring that the Lacumbra facilities for students are still intact and functional. A third option, the last option for Lacumbra, is to reconfigure as a single K8, with structure and focus to be determined. And the intent here is not that it be like traditional or neighborhood elementary school. The ad hoc committee didn't see any merit in that. Like, it would entail redrawing boundaries, it would siphon children off from Harding, Monroe, probably Adams. It's a little bit of robbing Peter to pay Paul, it didn't really make sense. But if the whole thing were restructured, maybe as an academy, the community academy and Lacumbra are both core knowledge schools, so they have a lot of similarities. But this, we did not even begin to put any parameters on this. And again, would be looking forward to hearing from the board, is this something that you're interested in? What might some of those parameters be? Not to answer all questions, but give some guidance, so that we have some framework upon which to build this option and have an idea of what it would really take. So that's the third option for Lacumbra. In all cases, other options we looked at, but disregarded for various reasons, are included in the report, and we're open to discussion about those as well, if you feel we discarded something that is really quite viable. So, last slide. The interim report. We anticipate the review through the fall on this report would be sometime in the fall. As Dr. Sarvas says, we wouldn't want to have the board give real clear direction until school's back in session and people have a chance to comment. It's just the realities of dealing with a school district. Are there other options that should be considered, that we either discarded, or you've thought of something else that meets all these goals? We'd love to hear it. And of the options we've presented, maybe other people present, which ones should we focus on? We're hoping that all, there's probably a total of 15 so far. We, it's not really practical to try to flesh out each one. We'd like to focus on the ones that are the most viable. We would take that input, and more about what it would take, what the phasing or implementation steps would actually be, and put them in a draft report, September, October, something like that. And then the draft report would have its own series of public hearings, as much as is needed. And then the board ideally will give direction. We like this option for this site, et cetera. And that's what would go in the final report, and then the district would start implementing. Just one last thing. We did also include two tables, one for the other elementary schools and the other secondary schools that don't, in some cases, they share sites, but they, they didn't present the thorny dilemmas that I just went through. We're assuming that the list of projects there, and in some cases, there are no projects, we anticipate filling those in, as well as Mr. Hetjank's having architects and engineers look at infrastructure projects, we're going to add those. But the basic goals of, you know, the ones I outlined at the beginning, safety, ADA, libraries, things of that nature, that would still be the overarching sort of filter through which all these individual projects would be passed as funds become available. But our goal when we started this was to give you a roadmap as where to go as funds become available. And I think our hope is, at least at the end of this process, you'll have a pretty good idea of where you're going, and putting the money where it'll do the most good for the most, the greatest number of students. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do board members want to take public comment before we engage in discussion, or would you?
Okay. Brian Tangue, followed by Kate Parker.
And I'll remind you again that you have three minutes, and I will give you a 30-second heads-up. Thank you.
Thank you. There's an old adage that you can't believe everything you read in the newspapers, and I'm glad this adage often proves true, particularly when it comes to reporting by the Santa Barbara news press. Apologies to Mr. Kuznia. A Page 1 article on the June 24th, on June 24th, on the possibility of merging the Santa Barbara Community Academy and Lacumbra into a K8 school, said, and I quote, "But things are already moving in the direction of a blend." As a new academy parent, I found this article troubling, as it appeared to presume that the merger was, if not a done deal, at least leaning in that direction. Where did the news press get such a strong impression? Was it from the administrator whose photograph accompanied the article? Or from the many unidentified academy parents who, and I, again, I quote, "seem ready to support a merger"? I have three points to make about that. First, had I known that there was even a remote possibility that the academy and Lacumbra would become a K8 school, I would not have enrolled my daughter in kindergarten at the academy for the '06-'07 school year. Second, if I'm reading it right, and I think Mrs. Salee just mentioned it, your own facility's master plan says somewhere that the possibility of an SBCA-Lacumbra-K merger, it's under the heading of "Other Ideas Considered and Not Recommended for Further Discussion." So why are we discussing it? Third, I urge this board not to do what Coca-Cola did when it tinkered with a time-tested winning formula and unleashed New Coke on the world's cola consumers. For those of you who don't remember, New Coke was a fiasco, filed today under the heading, "What Were They Thinking?". The academy concept works, so why in the world would you fool around with it? Enrollment is stable, and API scores are impressive. The exceptional staff and engaged parent community have conspired- The exceptional staff and engaged parent community have conspired to transcend a host of physical limitations. Of course, a decision for the long-term needs to be made, but not a decision that might spell the demise of this very effective school. And wouldn't that be an affront to the dedication and devotion of academy staff and parents who have worked hard and long to create a unique school culture? A downtown solution for the academy is preferable, but if that can't be achieved, at least allow the academy to remain true to its founding vision, that of a K-6 school under the leadership of a single administrator. Make that choice and the academy will succeed. The staff and parent community have proved that they have the wherewithal to make it work even against daunting physical limitations. I urge this board to reject any proposal that calls for merging the academy into a K-8 arrangement.
Thank you, Mr. Tangway.
Kate Parker, followed by Lanny Evenston.
Hello, I'm Kate Parker, I'm a candidate for the Santa Barbara School Board, I am an Adams School parent, and I also live in the city of Santa Barbara. I recognize that this is a very preliminary draft, and that it's far too early to be talking about price tags for some of these things, but some of these options are going to be very, very expensive to put into place. And one of them that I want to talk about tonight is the La Cuesta Continuation High School. I do think it's a good idea to consolidate those sites, and I think it's a very interesting idea to move it here to the Ortega site if the community academy goes ahead and moves elsewhere. However, in 1998, the citizens of Santa Barbara passed Measure I, a $25 million bond to renovate and construct elementary buildings. And of that $25 million, over $4 million was spent here at this site on the Santa Barbara Community Academy. In addition, close to $1 million was spent in state matching funds for construction here. So you're talking about four, sorry, close to $5 million. If you move an elementary school out of here and turn around and move a secondary school into this site, then you have a $5 million problem. And I think the taxpayers in the city of Santa Barbara will want to know, as part of you moving forward with these options, how the secondary district plans to repay the elementary district, the $5 million that couldn't be spent on libraries at Washington and Adams, that couldn't be spent on renovations at Franklin and Cleveland and Adams and Peabody, and many other things that were devoted here instead. So I, I hope that you'll look at that and explain that clearly as you press forward with this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Lanny Evenston, followed by Laura Wilson.
I think there was another question just board attached, from Tim Lynch. Yeah, he ceded his time to me.
I'm sorry, that, that is not, we, we passed a
Oh, really?
A revised policy in terms of our board meetings, we no longer allow speakers to cede time to other speakers. So, I'm sorry, you'll have to limit yourself to three minutes.
Okay, well, then I'll speak extemporaneously. The, issues of facilities are very important, and I think that, I had a timed five-and-a-half-minute presentation. The, let me recollect my thoughts. I think that the report, although well-intentioned, is not moving in the right direction. And I think that it will be incumbent on the board to have considerably more public involvement before any plans go forward. In particular, I, I do not think that the proposal to spend 10 or 11 million dollars at Galita Valley Junior High School, or 9 or 10 million dollars at Lachalina Junior High School, and band in $5 million of funds at this site is something that will be well-received by the Santa Barbara Elementary School District, and, and should be reconsidered. With respect to the movement of La Cuesta, I served on the board when the program was, it had been a consolidated program, it was decentralized. And it was considered to be a considerable improvement to be decentralized, although only about 3% of students are enrolled in La Cuesta at any given point in time. About 10% of La Cuesta students pass through La Cuesta during their high school careers. And to assume that all students from Galita and elsewhere are going to participate in La Cuesta to the same extent that they do now, with only a site downtown, I just think is incorrect. And, as I say, the La Cuesta issue is a very important one, and I'll address further correspondence to the board with respect to that. Let's see here. Crucially, the district has received $120,000 per each one of its La Cuesta sites. I contacted the business office yesterday, and they said that if the sites were consolidated, that the district would stand to lose up to $360,000. There was a block grant that consolidated some of those programs, however, it's still the case, at least according to the business office, that those funds would be lost within that block grant. So in other words, the consolidation would result in the loss of $360,000 per year, or it could. In correspondence to the board, I'll address what I consider to be alternatives, but in a nutshell, it seems to me that a cheaper approach, or less expensive, would be if this site opens up for Open Alternative School to be located here. And that would save some $10 million or thereabouts. And, so, in any event, I'll write you in further detail in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Laura Wilson, followed by Tim Lynch.
Sorry, I don't usually sit that far back. My name is Laura Wilson, and I am representing Citizens for Neighborhood Schools. Let's see, I believe, our organization believes, many of us believe, it is really important to retain this site as a downtown elementary school. It may indeed be a good idea to consolidate, I mean, to allow the community academy to be at one site, but that does not mean abandoning this site as an elementary site. OAS, Santa Barbara Charter, I mean, there, you know, there, there are schools that are about the right size. OAS might be thrilled to take advantage of an urban site, the way Anacapa School, half a block up, takes advantage of the urban site. You know, there are a lot of possibilities, but I just, this cannot be abandoned as a, as an elementary site. Partly, it's the money invested, but it's also the fact that there are kids in this area that could walk to this site. You know, they don't have to be bused anywhere. They are being bused across town to Monroe and Washington and all over, all over. Perhaps the community academy could, this could be another community academy. Same program, core knowledge, but it would be a neighborhood school. That's, you know, there are a lot of possibilities, but this really needs to be continued as a downtown school site. Also, using elementary district funds for permanent facilities outside of the geographic district seems really problematic, for a lot of reasons. Things could change, Galita could decide they wanted to unify, anything could happen. And it's, doesn't seem fiscally responsible to do that, when your mandate as elementary trustees is to serve the students of that geographic area, which is different than the secondary area. That, that I think is it in a nutshell. This is really important to keep another, you know, to keep this as an elementary school site. There are kids in this neighborhood, and they need a school. There's going to be constructions of some sort at St. Francis, that's going to really impact Roosevelt.
30 seconds.
And I don't know where, you know, where you're going to put the kids. But here's a site, here's a good site, and there are kids right here to go to school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Tim Lynch, did he leave? Dixie Moore.
Good evening. My name is Dixie Moore, and I'm speaking on behalf of the faculty of the Santa Barbara Community Academy. Today, after our first day of the 2006-2007 school year, the teachers met to discuss the three options that have been proposed in the facilities' master plan update. As you may remember, the Santa Barbara Community Academy was created by the elementary school district and the Board of Education. Our faculty would like to maintain the original defining characteristics of our school. Those are: core knowledge curriculum, school of choice, year-round schedule, uniforms, and a K-6 community. Most parents are unaware of the options being presented this evening. We would like to serve the needs of our families, and in order to do so, we will be conducting the survey at our back-to-school conferences over the next couple of weeks. We hope to be able to give the board a complete picture reflecting the views of our parents as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we look forward to the results of that survey. That concludes our public comment. Yes, did, I'm sorry, did you submit a form? I apologize, we missed, we missed a form.
Marie Henderson, excuse me.
I'm Marie Henderson, I'm a parent of two students at the academy. And I just want to bring up some other things that I think haven't been thought of that well. First of all, the article in the paper did sum it up and make it sound like it was going to happen. And so that's where a lot of our parents are at this point. The parents that are at the school love the school, the kids are thriving, the scores are high. Where do the kids go from here? You know, which junior high do you send your child to? You know, we heard from a lot of parents earlier tonight that they, they really see it as they want it to combine K through 8. I've also listened to what the teachers and our new principal have said about their reason for not wanting it to be K through 8. I really feel where the option needs to be is that the academy does need to be moved to K through 8, but it doesn't need to be combined with La Cumbre. Because, yes, the parents at La Cumbre are, are there for a different reason, they're not, they are in the catchment area, that's why their students have chosen to go there. They didn't go there to be academy student. However, since Joanne Keynes took over and brought in core knowledge, as the paper said, it has tripled in enrollment. So the parents like it, apparently, we're getting more people in to do the core knowledge classes, they are going to be there for 8th grade now. So why wouldn't our parents want their students to have core knowledge in 7th and 8th grade? You know, if we have La Cumbre as a separate school, who's to say they're going to continue core knowledge? It's not a core knowledge school, you know, they have a separate program. You know, that's my fear, I want my kids to have the core knowledge all the way through 8th grade, it's been great so far, why wouldn't I want it through 8th grade? You know, yes, the, the newspaper pointed out the points of, you know, the uniforms, the school year-round calendar, the parent participation, you know, but you talk to parents, other parents going to other 7th and 8th grade schools, they'd like to participate, but it's not made possible to participate. So I don't think that's such an issue. And I think that the year-round thing is really great. And everybody I talked to said, you know what, my kids would be ready to go back to school right now, too. And there is such a thing as modified year-round, and it's being used in other schools in California. And I would urge you to think about
30 seconds.
Modified year-round for the entire district. Thank you. And I really urge you to continue, because when you had these meetings, they were in 2005, the campus was not even split at that point. So when you asked for public opinion at their meetings, that was 2005, before our campus split, and before we knew what effects it would have, and, and it was quite a bit different. The parents thought, you know, is this going to be a good thing, splitting our campus? And as they told you tonight, it's been a good thing. You know, everybody likes it at La Cumbre.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Okay, that concludes public comment. Do board members have any comments on this?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Ms. Salee and associate, for all your hard work. I'm sorry, I know you have a name, I just had to say that. This is, I think this is a great start. I have a couple of questions about some things that I don't see here that I wanted to know about. Well, first of all, just a logistical question, and you might want to come to the microphone because I have a few questions for you. The previous master plan, which is quite voluminous and has lots of information in it, am I, is, my assumption is that this becomes an addendum to that, or it's an update, but it includes that, is that correct?
My other associate here says, basically, yes. Some of it, by its very nature, is probably getting to be obsolete, and we tried to update enrollment transfers, some of the more sort of germane information, but there's still a lot of good information there, and I suppose one could say it's incorporated by reference. I mean, we're not planning on printing those again, although they are available on the website if people want to see them.
Okay, just curious, it's still sitting there on my shelf, taking up, you know, space. But, but there is some valuable information there. Question about capacity at the sites, looking at the tables that summarized the school capacities at each of the school, the student capacity and then the current enrollment, and I just did a very thumbnail without a calculator, calculation of roughly 1,400 extra seat capacity, not seat, but student capacity throughout all of our elementary schools, with the understanding that that's very spread out, some schools have more than others. But what I don't see in this discussion is, which was addressed to some extent in the former master plan, was where would we go for a school closure option, should that be necessary? And so my question is, as we move forward with this, will, will that be addressed? And we had talked a lot about Mesa schools, being that there's three of them in close proximity, that that might be, and the recommendations that we have before us today, where you're talking about shared, not the recommendations, but the options, the shared facilities where you've got a junior high facility and a elementary facility sharing space, doesn't really get to some of those options that we had before, which was maybe OAS would be located at, we talked about Cleveland, or we talked about Washington, and those are sort of off the table at this point. So, long way around, what are you thinking about how to use that excess capacity, and are we looking at possible school closure in the next couple of years with our projected decline?
Madam President, in response, first on the capacity issue.
No longer President.
Oh, no? You're not?
That's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to me.
No, no. I was trying to go through the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll notice on the, I don't recall which table it is, the elementary capacity, there is a column with no numbers, and we spent some time talking about this, because especially for elementary schools, it's, it's misleading to say you have X number of classrooms and Y children, do the math, you know, you have this amount of capacity, because at the elementary school level, basically, every empty classroom gets used, and it's for music, or art, or computer lab, or additional library space, science. And that's why we're going to fill in that column, that not just, what's the number of classrooms that have K through 6th grade students all day long, but what are the other classrooms being used for to augment and enrich the program? So, we, we did struggle with that, and we knew someone was going to do the math, and, and that's fine, but it's not that simple, it's not a linear relationship. It's more relevant at the secondary level because you have classrooms that specialize. So the number, if you do the math, is more real, but all our secondary schools, pretty much, at least the high schools, are basically overcrowded, so it's kind of a moot point. Not all the element, or, excuse me, the junior highs, but, so we, we backpedaled somewhat because we don't want to mislead people, like, oh, look, we have room for another 1,400 kids, and that's half the private school kids in the area. It, it's not that simple at all. On the school closure issue, you're right, when you think of the 2003 recommendations, two of them, or three even, talked about schools that were definitely below capacity by anyone's definition, which was that were definitely below capacity by anyone's definition, which was more of an issue right then. It appeared that the decline was going faster and it's kind of leveled off somewhat to everyone's surprise, but certainly to their, you know, they're pleased about that. We talked about that a fair amount in the community meetings and then the attention shifted away from that. And it was one of the things I thought of as we were putting this together in the last couple of weeks, like all coming together, is we've let that issue dangle and I think we need to pull it back in. Because we got some good input from people, I think in the next round, I mean, we will be talking to school sites, we need to talk some more about that because that's the case where 14 months or whatever it is makes a big difference on that issue. And we only heard from 50 people at the community meeting and we wouldn't want to be sort of writing policy based on 15 or 50 people. But we did some work on it. We should memorialize it for some future update and some future board.
Well, that was where I was going with my question is, should we have to go in that direction? We wouldn't want to have lost this opportunity to spell out
Exactly.
How we would go about making that sort of decision. And, you know, maybe we are years away from having to even think about it, but I would hate to see us not address it to some degree. And the process for which we would go through deciding where that would happen if, if needed. And thank you for pointing that out. You're, you know, I understand the program things, the teachers are very excited to have those extra classrooms.
Oh, yeah.
And would be maybe not thrilled should we make decisions to shift things around and
Right.
For this, for the sake of saving money, which, I mean, we may get to a point where we have to do that.
Right.
My quick third question, I did not see a table. I found the table for this transfers from other school districts to our school district. I didn't see the one that showed transfers from our schools to other neighboring elementary districts and I was
It's in there, both for elementary and secondary, intra-district. They're paired.
So, the to and from go by?
Yeah, within intra, within the district, there are tables for the elementary showing the receiving schools and the donating, if you will, schools, the sending schools. And the same for the high schools. Surprisingly, Santa Barbara High of the three gets, has the most coming from the other two. But they're all pretty similar. That's kind of a wash at the high school level.
Okay, I must have misread table.
I don't recall which number, you know?
Well, I can, I can talk to you about that later.
Okay.
It's not, I'm talking about elementary
Right, it's definitely in there.
Oh, other districts.
It's right next to that.
I see it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. And my last question is to do with another issue that was a big discussion item for our previous discussions of the master plan was transportation and it was raised a little bit this evening about, we currently bus students from downtown
Right.
Up to the Mesa. Has that, and I didn't see that addressed much. And I'm wondering if that will be an element of the final plan as well.
We more or less focused on where we thought there was need for change in the sense of the shared sites and, for example, the community academy, the older kids coming here in the morning and being bussed over. We didn't really look at things that, you know, weren't changing as a result of the recommendations. If it's the board's pleasure, we can look into that. But we didn't feel that was part of our charge. We're, we're happy to help in any way we can, but we didn't get into that.
And I also just wanted to thank the, my two fellow board members for all the hours that they put in on serving on this committee and appreciate that this is a big effort district-wide and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Harder.
Just a couple of comments and then one suggestion. The, in, in response to Ms. Rodriguez, I think that the pressure points in the district are the shared sites. So, that was where the focus would most naturally shift. And when we were looking at focus schools having to do with OAS and Santa Barbara Charter, it also shifted it in the direction of shared sites once again. So, it was a very natural place to, to spend most of our time and attention. I just want to point out one thing in Appendix A where it talks about transfers inter and intra, and there were suggestions made for changes to policy. And those changes by and large have taken place already. So, it's one little piece that, that has been accomplished. So, I, I just wanted to point that out to members of the public. It has produced results even though we've not come full circle with it. What I'd like to suggest to my fellow board members is that now that we've had this big presentation, that we've seen the, the interim plan, we've seen some of the, the options for the shared sites, I'm really concerned about losing momentum. That if we let too long of a period of time lapse, that then the board just has to sort of gear itself up again for a discussion, try and get word out to the community. And I'm wondering if it would be worth it sometime late in August or early in September to have a workshop focusing, you know, solely on consideration of the options for shared sites, to information gather, you know, to get more public comment once school is in session. And also perhaps to either add options or discard options as board members see fit as the discussion starts to evolve. But I really, really don't want to allow a large lapse in time before the board takes it up again. And I think it would be very appropriate to take it up in the context of just this single item at a workshop and preferably from my standpoint with public comment.
I think that's somewhat the intent, I mean, and the, and the plan. I hesitate to have, to try to organize a, a meeting, a workshop that with the intent of having public input prior to the beginning of most of the schools as, right. So, I think if we do schedule it for very end of August or, I, I think my preference would be probably the very beginning of September so that people have a chance to, to catch their breath a little bit. But I agree because I also think that as Ms. Salee was pointing out, we need to give some direction of which projects we want to have fleshed, or which possibilities, options we want to have fleshed out more. And I would want to see then some, you know, much more detailed cost analysis, et cetera, of what those options would be. And I think there are certainly some options that we might want to eliminate so that you do have the, the opportunity to just focus on those that we think are really viable. But I think Ms. Rodriguez raised some interesting issues as well about things that we aren't looking at that we may need to. So, I guess I'm concurring with you, although it didn't sound like it at the beginning, that that we do need to have this, this kind of a meeting. I think that's sort of where we all intend to go. And it probably, I would, I, I think if you're recommending that it be a special meeting scheduled, you know, for its, as a sort of a standalone workshop, I would agree with that.
Do you want to set a tentative date for that now?
We, we would love to.
Well, for example, school starts on what, the 28th? I don't have a calendar here.
Yes.
But I believe
Rob, Ms. Woski has a
The first Tuesday in September would be the 5th. And we don't have a meeting scheduled on that date. That might be a good workshop date or
Dr. Sarvis, that's the only week I'm gone for the whole rest of the year.
Well, it is the, it is the day after
Going to visit the in-laws. Will you They're far enough away, I'm okay.
Will, will you be gone for the entire week or just?
Yeah, just that week.
Okay.
Okay.
I would recommend that we schedule it then for maybe the following week on a different day?
Go to the following week on, well, if we want a lot of input, we want it to be certainly after school.
We could do Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday's not good.
Yeah. That's fine.
Well, we have a board meeting on the, on the, no, don't move it. On the 12th. We have another board meeting on the 29th, 26th. Sorry, that's my
What's the Friday of that week? 15th? The 15th?
The week of the 12th?
The 15th. Is that the 15th?
14, 15, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Not on Friday.
Not on Friday? It's, the 16th is, but, but it may be being celebrated on the 15th.
We've had some special workshops around four o'clock on Friday afternoons, is that?
Well, that's, I'm, I'm looking at Ms.
Okay, so we're hearing some, some input from school personnel that Friday's afternoons might be good for parents.
If we could hear from Ms. Newer and Ms. Alzino whether or not they think a Friday afternoon would be workable.
The 15th is the last day of our quarter.
Mr. Sarkar?
Can we tentatively look at Friday, the 15th and if there are, if we discover that there are some significant
It is a minimum day for us, too.
On the 15th? How about, how about backing it up now? In August, there are five Tuesdays, which means that we have a meeting on the 8th, on the 22nd, and on the 29th. How about using regularly scheduled time and plugging our, our public hearing? Our discussion and public hearing on the 29th, which is the day after school starts.
That seems fine.
It's fine with me. I think that the school communities that are the most interested
Yes.
Will have folks here no matter what day, I, I suspect. I think pretty, everybody's pretty motivated.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's been a long first day of school for all of you.
Okay, so let's look at August 29th, taking our regularly scheduled board meeting and using some of that time.
Does it make sense to, to divide the meeting up into different parts of her, these different options so that all of, you know, everyone doesn't have to come for the whole time, but rather, I mean, we will come for the whole time, but the parents can come for their particular school.
It does. We'll divide it and we'll advertise the different discussion times.
Well, or
I don't, go ahead.
What about organizing a workshop with breakout sessions that run simultaneously?
And we could do that as well.
Dr. Sarvis?
Yes.
Maybe, does the board meet in two weeks?
No.
No, the board doesn't meet again until August 8th.
This is where you have a break for a while?
Yes, we don't meet again until August 8th.
What I was not knowing that, I was going to suggest maybe, there's lots of different ways we could put this together and I do feel like we need sort of a workshop, sit around looking, you know, tables around, talking to each other where the public would of course be invited. You know, we might want it to be in two pieces. One, that is just really having everybody understand what's recommended and then one, a week or two later where public input would be taken. I think it's going to take a while. I mean, there's different ways, my point is
I think there will also be a time limit on that.
Yeah.
Because to have a three and four hour meeting
No.
Becomes a problem. Let me suggest this. I don't anticipate many student, student expulsions on the second day of school. Let me suggest that we have workshop at 5:00, that we run from 5 till 7, that we take up whatever regular board business, but we, but we conclude our business early that night.
Sounds good.
So, if we can do a two-hour start with a workshop at 5:00 on the 29th, then we'll pick the follow-up date and it might be the 19th. It might, well, we'll, we'll have to decide.
And remembering what we'd be talking about there is, you know, understand, making sure everybody understands, gets their questions answered, hear from the public at some point in there, and then board direction. It's not like it's final action on, you know, August 29th or something. There's still work to be done, but direction is really important and
Yes, and we will get
We want to hear from the public.
We will get word out to the sites. Of course, a number of them just heard it here, but
Yeah.
We'll get word out to the sites, including all those affected by this.
That would be a time I would anticipate that we would really want to hear from the sites to know what their concerns and their preferences are, given what the, what the recommendations are and if there's anything that they think we need to consider that isn't there. Because when we give direction or we'll want to have heard all the possibilities and really where people are, you know, having some questions or some concerns. So, hopefully people will hear this, will see this on TV. Hopefully, I, I'm sure all of you who are in the audience will take it back to your respective campuses and communities. And then Dr. Sarvis will get this out across the district. So, thank you. Okay, does that conclude our discussion on this item then? Thank you, Ms. Salee.
You're welcome.
And associate. We appreciate the work that all of you have done, including our board members. Thank you very much. And thank you to the public who stayed till this late hour to participate in this discussion. Okay, we are now going, we are now starting an agenda item after 10:30, but we are just, no, well, just our last little cleanup agenda items. G, H, and I, I, and I. So, coming events?
None other than the ones that I reported to you for later in August.
Okay. Board, any coming events from board members? No. Okay. Board comments? Any questions or comments from the board? Nope. Future agenda items? Any additional agenda items from the, from board or anyone else? No. Okay, that brings us to our favorite item, adjournment. And we have a one-month break. We will meet again Tuesday, August 8th, and we are now adjourned.